Well, for joining us. We are going to start with, I'm just waiting to get on the Zoom. We're going to start with our CCHS student update. Let me just see. If our students are with us, yep, I see Felicity. Zaria and Harry, perfect, welcome.
Hello, just give me one minute to share my screen. Sorry, I didn't have it up already. Okay, perfect. Um, so yeah, we have a pretty quick update this week. Yeah. Sorry, um, I guess I can kick it off. So obviously this past weekend was kicks for cancer and then the homework free weekend as well. And that was a really great break for students, especially after a pretty busy first few weeks of school. And obviously it's always nice to come together as a community like that and really have a lot of socializing across the grades and even across the school. So that was a lot of fun for everyone. And then also Student Senate has chosen our new and ninth grade senators, which is very exciting. So we're hopefully going to have them at a meeting soon and we're looking forward to getting their input.
Uh, last Friday, Student Senate had one of our first, uh, like major events of the year, which was the Activities Fair. And that was a great success. We had over 50 clubs participate and it was really exciting. There's always candy and bribery, but overall it's a great way for people to learn about, for students to get a chance to learn about all of the amazing clubs that we have since I think, there's like a massive list of clubs, but there isn't that much like opportunity to know them. So the Activities Fair is always a super fun way for people to realize what CC has to offer.
Yeah, definitely. Um, and then also the Guidance Department has been helping to bring different college admissions officers to the school. They've been utilizing Flexbox for that and it's been really great. I think. Yeah, this might be our second round. That's this coming Wednesday. And it's a lot of fun to kind of get a sense for different schools and also talking to the admissions officers can be great to find out like, what they're looking for in an application or something like that. And that's been an important resource for a lot of seniors.
Yeah, along those lines, in addition to the Flexbox, there have been other continuing feedback regarding other parts of the bell schedule. The main concern right now that some students have is lunch since last year with three lunch blocks, we would have about 400 kids per lunch, but now since we only have two, there's about 600 kids per lunch and there seems to be a shortage of chairs and table space. So we're hoping that we'll be able to work with administration to hopefully get that sorted out so that people don't necessarily have to sit like in the hallways or on the floor during lunch.
Um, last week was our first, um, first early release day. And I heard a lot of feedback from other students that they were either disappointed that they didn't have their Flexblock or that they had such a short lunch. But they were overall happy that they got an early release, of course, but they still felt a little disappointed at the end of the day.
Yeah. Um, and just like going along with those lines, I think, what I had heard even amongst teachers is obviously we need that certain, I think it's the 990 hours, but that it kind of just feels like the classes and the actual like learning portion of the day had kind of just been condensed. I know like amongst the seniors, some people were even saying that they might actually prefer to have another hour and have a lunch built in just because it is kind of a long stretch to have that just like brief nutrition break and then to be making it until like, I think it was 1:30 that without a lunch. And also just a little bit awkward timing wise for anyone who's playing a fall sport or has like a club after school, because it's not always enough time to go home or like really get a substantial amount of homework done if you have to come back, just like a few hours later. One positive thing though, obviously like Felicity was alluding to is the Flexbox. I think that's something that has continued to be really well received amongst students and teachers. It's just been really nice, obviously as well from a scheduling perspective, like if you have to make up a test or need to get extra help, it's nice just to have one guaranteed common time with the teacher. Um, and then one final thing we wanted to highlight that we had heard amongst student body is some of the problems with the restrooms from last year have continued. And obviously this isn't at the fault of like the custodians or anything like that, but just like a lack of like paper towels, soap, sometimes things like that can be a problem. And obviously like, that's not something that should be happening. So any steps that we can take with administration to resolve that would be important.
All right, yes, right ahead. Yeah.
Have you folks shared this with Mr. Miller and Mrs. Stahl yet? Just so I know what messaging they've gotten, because we want to be sure they're the key to some of the changes you're asking for.
Right. Um, we have our first meeting with them, I believe, next week. We're planning to invite them. So we're going to raise some of this stuff then for sure.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
That's great. Well, I love that you said that everyone's missing their Flexblocks. So the Flexblocks have definitely been a positive at the high school. So that's been great. Well, again, a very thorough update and Kicks for Cancer was a big success. And I, I feel like the whole school was really invested in that. So thank you for your update. Once again, if anyone has any questions. Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Terrific.
Good night. Good night, guys.
All right, and we will move on to public comment and I will just remind everyone that public comment is for three minutes. We will start with public comment in the room and then go online and go back and forth. And our public comment period is 20 minutes. So do we have any public comment in the room? I see none. Any online? Please use the raise hand feature. And we have no public comment. All right, now we're very excited of recognitions tonight. We have two recognitions with us, all CCHS students. And I will give it to Dr. Hunter to start with our first, which is from the debate team, which we have not heard from yet. We're very much looking forward to it. I'm just going to grab you a chair though.
Come on up, Willer. Yeah. And I'm going to encourage, I'm going to do really general introductions and encourage all of the students to give you the bigger picture because they're going to be far more versed in some of their accomplishments than I will have at a very general level. So Willber's here, he's our first All-American. Give me the right title so I know.
Yeah, it's, um, it's the Academic All-American title.
Great, in the National Speech and Debate Association.
Um, so I asked Dr. Hunter if I could say a few things, thank a couple of people, encourage you to keep your eyes pointed in certain directions. So yeah, I'm in front of you guys today, not as an individual achiever, but as the product of dozens of people who have sustained me on this journey. I think first I want to thank Tim Avro, who's up on the screen there. There are a lot of interesting things about Tim, but here are two. One is he unfortunately has COVID right now. And we're wishing, we're all wishing him well. And the other is that he actually founded the debate event that Concord Carlisle primarily competes in. And he has been a debater for almost 50 years and was a national champion in the early eighties. So, uh, he has a bucket load of experience and we are overjoyed that he's brought it to CC. Personally, Tim, you brought life to our organization for me as it seems to me to be fading into darkness and revived my interest in debate. He obviously cannot be here, but the first CC debate captain when I came to high school was a guy named Sri Konokar. He was the one that initially grabbed my attention to this school's debate and hooked me onto a serious commitment. And of course, you guys knew some of our captains up until their graduation last spring. We had novice captain Alicia Bott and our varsity co-captains, Richard Lee and Molly Branigan. Their contributions to my career as well as the team as a whole, quite literally saved Concord Carlisle debate and transformed it from a relatively small school to one of the top competitors in Massachusetts. I want to thank some of the debate partners I've had over the years, just briefly, who I believe played a more integral role in the journey than anyone else. Alex Lee, Juliana Wu, Alicia Bott, again, Felicity Zhang was just here. I wish she could be here for this and Adelaide Richardson.
I like it. She's waving at you.
Felicity. Yeah. Anyway, they have no idea, um, how much fun I've had competing alongside them and reacting to them with victory and defeat. I would not be here without every tournament we attended together. The last thing I wanted to say was that I am not a phenomenon. I do not stand here alone. I am not the recipient of some rare award that CC will never see again. For the past four years, we have breathed life into this team. I will remain CC's only academic All-American for about four months, at which point I will be joined by my brilliant co-captain Felicity Zhang, who alongside mine. And in fact, due to my slowing down for college applications, Felicity has already passed me in NSDA competition points. And many others are very close behind, including some Felicity, including some not even halfway through their sophomore year. Wow. So I'll end with this. I hope that you will continue looking upon CC debate fondly as a new generation of competitors arrives in the coming years. If things go well for our team, we will be entering a new golden age of CC success. So prioritize debate in your agendas in your field of view and remember that well fighting leads to a victor, debate leads to a solution.
Thank you. My. Precious and inspiring. Thank you so much. That was wonderful.
I've grown very enamored with speech and debate in a time where technology and visuals so overwhelming. So kudos to all of you for preserving the old art of talk. Okay, so our second, yeah, our second group, um, we'll invite those folks to the table or on Zoom, wherever they are.
I think we have Lea and Zora with us and I think.
Emmy was going to be on Zoom. Yep, I see her. There she is. So they're here to talk and share with us a special project they did this summer at MIT around data activism. And it was a, you'll have to help explain the connection to the calculus project and give us the big picture of what the work was. But we want to be sure we recognize your really outstanding achievements this summer and make sure the community gets to hear more about it. Do you want to introduce yourselves and then tell us about your project?
Um, I'm Lea Pavlov and I'm a sophomore at CC.
I'm Zora Webb and I'm also a sophomore at CC.
Um, I'm Emmy Taylor and I am also a sophomore at CC.
Great. Tell us, tell us about your project.
And your work at MIT. Well, me and Zora worked together with a nonprofit called Food Link. And we were able to, um, interview and talk to a lot of community members who live or currently live and in redlined areas. And we were able to collect a lot of data and create charts and graphs and figure out where, like what towns and areas had the, what would you say?
Most food insecurity.
Yes, food insecurity. So we were pretty much focusing, or me and Zora's group were, was focusing to figure out what communities had the most food insecurity to try and provide more, I guess, food to help the community members. So we work with a nonprofit called Food Link, which helps provide foods and they get food from grocery stores and just bakeries and just food that would otherwise get thrown out to bring to different Salvation Army areas and food pantries.
That sounds great. Important work.
Well, you had originally asked the connection between the calculus project and this data activism work and the, um, the class and program was originally brought up to us by the founder, Dr. Memes. Um, and it was introduced to us, to all three of us and our parents by him. He said, look at this opportunity. I think you guys should join and we did. And it was a really wonderful opportunity. We learned, um, things. We learned, we learned coding with Python, which was something I knew nothing about. And, um, we learned how to take data from all of these big websites and turn it into something meaningful and powerful. And, and something that can change a lot of people's lives. And I didn't work with Lea and Zora. I was in a different group. My group worked with, um, the Charles River Watershed Association. And we worked to create awareness about, um, sorry, there's kids in the back. We worked to raise awareness about the inland flooding that can occur in urban areas. And the reason why, um, the reason behind all of those and the racial discrimination that had happened a long time ago to see the, um, impact that it has now on today's society, because you don't always, you don't always look back to see the root problem. You only see what's happening now. Um, and I think I definitely learned a lot about, um, how things in the past affect me personally and everyone around me. And it was just a really cool experience and I would definitely do it again.
Amazing.
Such great examples of real world application, which is becoming more and more of our goal. Not just in the summer, but during the school year.
Well, and like to me too, it's so much of what we talk about, like from an interdisciplinary perspective, you're marrying math and social sciences in a way that is so tangible. You don't often get, you know, we, we talk a lot about like, oh, we want like science classes and math sciences to, big classes to be adjacent because there's so much synergy and similarly too with ELA and, and social studies. But this is taking, you know, two kinds of very different ways of thinking, sort of mathematical and, and sort of, I don't know. And I, I think that marriage is really cool. You guys nailed it. That's awesome.
That's great. So I really want to thank all of our high school students, Zora and Lea and Emmy and Wilbur. And what, what I saw with all of you is you've all mentioned the teachers and the coaches or the role models that have really drawn you into the work you've done. So thank you. You, you all are very impressive and you know, there's a lot to come in front of the school committee and you're on TV and all of that. But I, I'm really impressed with our CCHS students. So really thank you for coming tonight.
Keep it up.
We, we see so much evidence from you just in a few minutes of how you are not only seeing opportunities, you're taking those opportunities and then you're not afraid to make change. And, uh, well, you look at me, my generation hasn't done a great job for you. Haven't. And for you to step up the way you, you are is, uh, is heartening to all of us. So please keep it up and thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Absolutely. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
You can stay, but you're welcome.
I'm going to work on your spreadsheets.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we will move on now to our consent agenda. And so I will ask, does anyone want to take anything off of the consent agenda? All right, then we will take a vote.
Would you speak to the change that was made on the?
Yes.
July 20?
Yep, the July 20 minutes. Cynthia had requested a couple of changes on just including the public comment from Mark Howell and correct me if I'm wrong, Cynthia, let me think of, there's one other, one other.
There were just a couple of comments about the capital plan.
The, excuse me. Oh, the capital plan. I think they were highlighted in the second and third versions.
Look at your computer.
On your computer, not on the phone. The phone, they're not highlighted, only on the computer.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? So, and of course I forget every time, we're going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
For the record, we know this is July 20 and August 15 minutes.
Yes, and the corrected version that came to all of us today. So it was version three. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And this next one is really quick correspondence. We did not have any correspondence to either school committee for our last meeting. And what I'm going to do right now is we're going to actually move the superintendent chairs and liaisons update into after our discussion, because we have Andrew with us tonight and we're going to have him start first. So we're, we're moving the agenda around just a little bit. So Andrew is going to start with his DEIB discussion. He's going to join us. You should all, you can come right up here, Andrew. Oh, did we get rid of your chair? I'm so sorry. So they cleaned up and our back. We should just leave the chairs. Yeah, whatever is the most comfortable chair for you. How about that? Um, and we had asked Andrew to come tonight. We had our report requests. And Andrew, you were the first one to answer us and all of our report requests and it was very thorough. I have left everyone paper copies of those in front of their seats. So you should have all of the responses to the questions that we were looking for as a committee. These were multiple report requests. So Andrew's gone through all of these along with both Dev Jemison and Dwayne, I'm going to get his last name. Clatcher, who is also with us. I saw him online at some point. So I will turn it over to Andrew to just kick us off.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to Dr. Hunter and members of the school community for inviting me here this evening. Um, if Dwayne, if you're still with us, can you come off Zoom?
He's definitely here a few minutes ago. No, I don't see him now.
If not, that's okay. But I do have Ms. Deborah Jemison, our high school Mecca director here with us this evening, Ms. Jay. All right, cool. So this evening, I will share a couple of updates. And what I have done, you all have my report in front of you. But to just keep us structured in a way that, um, is, is efficient and with time and everything, I decided to pull a lot of the reports into slides. Because I know there are folks at home that visually that might be helpful as well. So what I will do now is just share my screen. And really, you know, again, all the reports that are in front of you are on these slides. I try to made it, I try to make it as, 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 as a succinct as possible. So let me just minimize a few things here. There we go. All right. All right. So today again, DEIB updates. I will touch on these five topics that I thought, uh, were sort of the main topics in the report, uh, that the school community requested. So I'll start with, um, some of my EIB objectives for the 2324 school year. I'll provide an update on our CPS and CCRSD Mecca program. Um, I'll touch on the implicit bias training, um, that we made available to our support staff this summer. I'll give an update on teacher diversification efforts and then I'll end on bias reporting system. So as you all know, you know, we, in terms of our DEIB initiatives, it is closely aligned to our district strategic plan, um, which has now been, um, updated, um, to reflect some of the initiatives on there and, and, and some measurable outcomes, um, that we hope to accomplish within the next five years. And so a lot of our DEIB work is really emphasized in strategic objective three, which prioritizes fostering an inclusive culture. And our objective there is to create a collaborative and inclusive culture in the schools and community that values diversity and recognizes the contributions and uniqueness of each learner. So for this year and, and again, you know, when I presented here, I think two years ago, I did state that each year we will come up with new objectives, uh, to accomplish each school year. And again, each objective does lead to our ultimate, you know, the ultimate goals that we have set in the strategic plan for the district. And so again, not to, not to sort of, you know, um, repeat anything I've said in the past. I did present this exact slide back in the spring. And there are various objectives on here. For example, you know, under, uh, professional development this year, you know, one of our major objectives is to, it really is for Dr. Hunter, Assistant Superintendent Bob Connery and Kristen Anderson to work very closely with the CTA and the CCTA to establish sort of a mandatory requirement for all faculty and support staff, um, to enroll in our anti, uh, anti-racist school practices course, which is a professional development offering that, that we provide to faculty each year. And so we're working with again, CTA and the CCTA to accomplish that objective. Other areas include, you know, a lot of our hiring and retention efforts are noted there in terms of some of the objectives there for this year. Some of the work particularly around, you know, the bias reporting, which I'll touch on, uh, later in the presentation. And then of course, you know, a lot of the work that we've been able to accomplish with our cultural competency and literature committee. You know, making sure that we are adopting diverse, uh, texts, uh, literary texts across our, our curriculum, making sure students feel represented. And, and, and the curriculum is, is critically important for us and for students, of course. And so the work continues there as well. But again, I could probably spend the entire time that school committee is meeting this evening to talk through each of these objectives. But they are here and I'm happy to discuss them, um, further in, 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 you know, as we endeavor through the school year. And so of course, you know, another area of our, uh, objectives that, you know, continuously come up is, you know, how are we measuring success, right? In all of these areas. And so, you know, I really, um, took some time to think through some of the objectives on the previous slide. And of course, there are many, many, you know, metrics that we can look at, you know, for example, you know, looking at the, um, diving into frontline, my learning plan, where a lot of the PD work, um, is, is, is sort of tracked. Looking at the participation rate of our faculty and staff, you know, and all of those PD offerings that we provide in terms of school culture, um, looking at, uh, the timeline of the EIB trainings that we offer to our students, the number or rather the frequency in which we offer those learning opportunities. As you all are familiar with, we partner with the Ideas Organization. And of course, our longstanding partnership with the Celtics Shamrock Foundation, which every year, we conduct our Celtics playbook initiative, uh, for all middle school students. And so, you know, again, gathering those, 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 you know, the, the participation rate to student reflections. And of course, you know, making sure that there is, you know, funding each year to support those programs is critical. Um, and so make, and, and so in, 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 in sort of reflecting in all these areas, you know, we want to make sure that the work continues, right? And so if you look at the other, uh, buckets that are in here in terms of, you know, for example, equity, cultural responsive curriculum, you know, we now have a phenomenal data platform, uh, with open architects largely thanks to, uh, Kristen's efforts over the last year. It is an amazing, amazing tool. Um, and if, you know, I think our administrators already have access to it, but our teachers I know are going to just take full advantage of it where they can really do a deep dive on, on student achievement, academic scores, et cetera, um, to really help meet the needs of all students. But again, as I said in a previous slide, um, I'm more than welcome to return and talk through a lot of these.
We'll definitely have you back again this year, Andrew. So don't feel like.
Plenty of opportunities. This slide is really again, to summarize, um, exactly where our DEIB objectives come from. Again, you know, we have our district wide strategic plan. And our DEIB strategic plan is an extension of this, uh, district wide strategic plan. And again, the work resides in, uh, objective number three on inclusive culture. And for the 23 to 20, 2028 school year, those are the outcomes, uh, for progress monitoring in terms of inclusive culture, in terms of a lot of the DEIB work. And so again, I think for just for the sake of time for today, again, I will touch briefly on hiring, which is one of our, uh, strategic initiatives in here. And so this is a great resource, uh, for stakeholders in the community, um, to have. So I'll transition now to, um, uh, Mecca program report, uh, for the school committee. Currently, this is the sort of organizational structure of our Mecca program. We now have two very competent, um, Mecca directors. Dwayne Clatcher is the CPS interim Mecca director. And of course you have Ms. Deborah Jemison is the CCHS Mecca director. Barbara Burgos is the senior administrative assistant. And she supports, uh, both the CPS and CCHS Mecca programs. First, under CPS, we have, um, Solange Benjamin, who is the elementary academic liaison. You then have Alyssa Silva, who's also the, the second elementary academic liaison. And then Evelyn Seraphin is actually our new academic assistant and bus monitor. And she actually starts in the district next week. Uh, so Evelyn is new to, to the team. When we look over at the middle school, we are still working to, um, to fill the current vacant position for Mecca counselor. So that is still in the works. We now have a second, uh, middle school academic liaison, Andre Thomas, who started a few weeks ago. He comes to us from Boston Public Schools. And then of course, you know, I think, uh, you've heard in the past, you know, making sure that we have bus monitors, you know, available on, on our buses. We have Sue Harrington and Danielle Legazi, both, uh, middle school tutors who have. who have graciously stepped up to be spare monitors when needed. And so that's been a great help. Uh, when we look over at the high school level, we have Christopher Skinner, who is the High School Metco Academic Liaison. Um, and then you have Melanthie Fernando, who is the Metco Counselor. Right? So that's sort of the layout of the Metco, um, the current uh, organizational structure for our Metco Programs. All right. With um, you know, I, again, I, I, we have Deborah Jemerson here and then of course, Dwayne, um, but I thought it would be important for you to see both of their sort of visions for, for their program. It is very similar in a sense, but I wanted to make sure that, that, that I um, created this slide visually uh, for you all to see and read. Uh, so for Dwayne, again, I quote, and you know, his, his vision this year is really to be visible and accessible to all students, staff, administrators, and all appropriate stakeholders who are involved in their daily experience. His goal is to meet students where they're at as means to build trust and rapport uh, with them. Working collaboratively with the adults at their respective schools, he hopes to create a sustain and uh, he hopes to create and sustain a conducive uh, welcoming environment where Boston Metco students are excited to learn and come to Concord every day. All right. So that is Dwayne. And then of course, Ms. Jay's vision for her program is to create strong and positive connections with Boston Metco students and support their academic journey toward achieving academic excellence in collaboration with the CCHS administration. And medical staff, Ms. Jay fosters a supportive learning environment for Boston medical students with a strong focus on student engagement, transparent communication, and meeting their learning and social emotional needs. All right. So that, those are their vision uh, for this year. I know the school committee uh, did ask for um, information on Mecca supports, programs and resources. And so on the CPS side, uh, Dwayne did highlight a few areas. Um, first nutrition, um, each year we collaborate very, very closely with our food services department to ensure that we have snacks, breakfast essentials for our, for our Boston Mecca students. As we all know, it is a very, very long day, especially if you're an athlete or really any student who is staying after school, right, for academic support. And so it's, 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 it's one of those areas that we have to make sure that, that our students have access to, to, to nutrition. Because again, the day is long and we need to make sure that their energy levels are, are up to par um, as they sort of um, go through the day. In terms of extracurricular activities, again, engagement remains very strong for our Boston students and CPS side. Um, we are late bus transportation, um, enables our students to participate fully in programs without any limitations. We are very, very lucky to be in a district um, that really, you know, again, uh, provides late bus transportation for all middle and high school students. In terms of special education services, um, again, this is from doing with some of our students receiving special education services, he will like to be able to further educate uh, Boston Mecca families and students when age appropriate about the intricacies of their plan accommodations in a way that, that they will understand um, what their child uh, needs. And so I thought, I think that's a great, great idea. And I think that um, Dwayne will be able to partner with Angel Charles, our Director of Student Services uh, to make sure that happens, that, that training opportunity for families. Terms of transportation new this year, um, we did partner with Case Collaborative to provide transportation services for Boston students um, who've come into our district on an IEP. Um, and where the IEP requires door-to-door transportation. So we have five students um, that are being serviced currently in our district and that transportation plan continues to work very well. Um, it, it is efficient and it's important to note that, you know, given the distance uh, commuting from Boston to Concord every day does not change, right? There's traffic patterns change on the daily. Um, and so we have, you know, we have our babies, you know, on, on, on those vans and it's a long ride. Um, and so, but very grateful that Case Collaborative was able to step up and support and support us in this effort. And then lastly, um, well, let me, let me transition to CCHS and I'll speak more about the school community support. Um, on the CCHS side, uh, Ms. Jay has three really, really um, uh, essential sort of um, resources, opportunities for students. Uh, the Building Bridges HBCU Initiative is an annual event for students interested in attending an HBCU, historically black colleges and universities. The event is an opportunity for students to meet with HBCU admissions counselors across the country, attend information and networking sessions and schedule onsite interviews. Last year, Ms. Jay was able to take juniors and seniors to this event. Six Boston Mecca students attended uh, the event. All students were granted onsite interviews, which was awesome. And five out of those six students received acceptances from an HBCU. And one student is currently attending an HBCU Norfolk State University in Virginia. College SA write-in workshop, um, this is a new initiative. It's available to all Boston um, Mecca juniors and seniors, and it is supported by Liz Cobb's uh, who is a member of the League of Women Voters. Um, and our CCHS Mecca Council, uh, Melanthie Fernando also supports uh, Liz in supporting our students. Uh, lastly, the after-school math tutorial support is available to all Boston Mecca students. Um, this is uh, sorry, after-school math tutorial support. Uh, this math support is provided in person or Zoom uh, by Mr. Mark Engerman, who is a retired Concord Academy math teacher. Uh, he's a Concord resident who essentially approached us to say, hey, I'm now retired. How can I help? And um, he's coming in actually this week to support one of our uh, Boston Mecca students in math. So all great. In terms of school community support, I think this was a shared sentiment between Ms. Jay and, and Mr. Clasher. Um, that the school committee, you know, continues to find ways to meet our Boston uh, Mecca families where they're at. So, you know, last year we held a few school committee meetings in Boston. We should find, you know, many ways to, to continue those, those efforts and, you know, the admin team held their retreat at the Mecca office this summer. And, you know, Millie would not stop saying, where's your school committee? They can use the space. The space is beautiful. Come, you know, whenever you want. And so please take Millie on that offer. Uh, the space is amazing, um, is large enough to, to accommodate everyone here. So.
And we were actually discussing that today. And I think tentatively, we're looking for a February meeting, which
All right.
I'm not sure if that's going to be good or bad with weather. We have to find the right time, but I, I think we should probably go to Metco eight this year. We haven't been there in
It's a great space.
I do too.
And Millie will do her Mecca history for you, which is really powerful. So.
So the next slide is important and I, I thought it's, it will be important to, to, to touch on this. Uh, I do know there was a request um, to sort of share, sort of give an update on the status of protocols or just disciplinary actions. And I do believe um, this, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that um, this request was coming from the fact that for as long as I have been connected with Metco, um, we have always had a Metco handbook. Even way back when Jean McGuire was the Metco, the executive, um, you know, the executive director for, for the program, we always had a Metco handbook. And inside the Metco handbook were very sort of, um, you know, were expectations for students and families in terms of their engagement in the Metco program. And for me, you know, when I came on board on Metco, I understood these expectations to be to, to not be different in a way, but to be a way to empower our students, not, not to set a separate type of expectation, but a way to empower our students to not have lower expectations for themselves. We know that many, some, I'll say some of our educators and Concord is not immune to this oftentimes lower the expectations for students of color, for high knee students, students with disabilities, low-income students, et cetera. And when I came on board, I understood this Metco handbook to raise that level of expectations for our students, right? And so that is sort of how this Metco handbook came about is I essentially brought this Metco handbook that I designed when I was at Lincoln Sudbury, when I was at Hingham, and I brought that on board here in Concord. Um, but given the lens that we all have now around equity, it is important to state, and this is coming from your DEIB director. It is important to state that if we are going to set any expectations that impact students, we have to make sure that those expectations are equitable across the board. So we have gone ahead, um, as of August, uh, we have completely removed sections of the Metco handbook that speak to expectations, policies, procedures, et cetera, that are specific to our Metco community, our students and families. Um, and it's important to also note that currently Dr. Hunter, Bob, um, and the principals, including Ann John Arena are revising all of the student handbooks to make sure that it is consistent. You know, those policies, procedures, et cetera, expectations are consistent across the board, pre-K through twelve, twenty-two, I should say. Um, so again, you know, I, I, I hear the feedback. Um, but again, I think, you know, the, the work continues. I know, I know this is, this is, um, this is not a
Those were some good conversations you had.
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's important that we name it and I'm glad that feedback came from you all, from the school committee, um, because we all have blind spots, right? And, and just because there's one way of doing things, it's important. Context is important in a lot of this as well. And so, but it's important that as we continue to have this equity lens, that we are constantly confronting the inequities and addressing those inequities head-on. Right? And, and, you know, I'll be the first to admit, this is definitely a blind spot that I, over the years, thought again, this handbook is meant to raise the expectations, but in raising the expectations, we are actually setting a different, right? Set of expectations for students, right? And so, um, again, we've gone ahead and removed many, many areas and, and, and many, you know, policies, expectations, et cetera, in the handbook. And um, really looking forward to see what uh, Dr. Hunter, Bob and, and, and John come up with in the revised versions of the um, handbook across the district. Any questions on that?
So, um, what's the timeline?
Just on the handbook or anything?
No, 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 the handbook.
We're working and I'll just clarify a little bit. The student handbooks is one piece, which you've already approved earlier this, late this summer. Um, so that's complete. What we're working on now with John is there's a transportation for the adults, not for the kids, transportation set of practices and protocols that we're updating as well. Um, a document that had just been the way it was for a long time. And as we peel through the layers of that, there's some work to be done there too. Um, and that applies to all kids, not just the Mecca population, but it's a piece of some of the incidents we have had last year. And we want to be sure we're, you know, reflecting on all directions. So that's the adult work that we're doing.
Uh, my feedback would be that I read the Metco handbook and particularly the transportation just didn't feel right.
Yep.
And the expectations, it just felt like, you know, um, I, I realize it's a long ride and, you know, it's a whole different thing than taking a ten-minute bus ride to your house. From one of these walls for the Parker to Carlisle residence usually is ten minutes for Carlisle. Um, but uh, I think it has to be the same set of expectations, right?
So the Mecca handbook's complete. We did that before school.
Right. But I'm saying the expectations should be the same for all students.
Absolutely.
Yes.
They're not.
They are now.
They are now.
Okay.
The new, the twenty-three, twenty-four book is completely, is different.
Okay.
They link, they just link over to the student handbook. There's nothing different from Metco now.
Excellent.
Yep. We heard you loud and clear.
Okay.
Yep. You were, you were right.
Yeah. Cause I think, I, I mean, and then if you got feedback for Mecca families.
You know, it's
Can I try to answer? Cause this is the conversation we had, the perspective which varied among the Mecca families, it varied among us, like it depended on how you were reading it.
Right.
So Andrew's take wasn't, he wasn't the only one to think it was actually trying to up the expectations and serve kids really well. There was a mixed response that it felt different and exclusionary. So by just syncing it up with the student handbooks feels like it's the best, best plan.
All right.
One thing, um, as you think about these handbooks, you should also make sure that any changes made to all of these handbooks align with our own policies.
Which is why we, the Mecca book only links to the, the formal student handbooks that you approve, which we have aligned to because you're right. Yeah, totally right.
All right.
So my quick question, does that go families have any input in this handbook?
A lot of the expectations around transportation was some of those expectations were feedback, at least when I was Metco Director, was feedback directly from families, right? Um, just based on certain behaviors that we were seeing on the bus. Cause again, it is a long commute, right? Um, and so, you know, in, in, in addressing some of these behaviors, you know, lot of our Mecca families would, you know, provide input, you know, why are we, for example, you know, I remember when I was Metco Director. And this is, this is still a policy today. Um, we had a lot, a lot of conversations around whether or not food is allowed on the bus, right? If you go another districts, most districts, food is not allowed on the bus. But you factor in the long commute, our Mecca fan, right, our, our Boston Mecca students have to experience, you start to think differently about that policy, right? And so in the transportation section of the, you know, there was a, you know, an expectation that there is no food allowed. However, in parentheses, it listed certain foods that students could bring onboard the bus. Uh, so.
I guess one step further, what about the students? Sometimes they can provide solutions.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Um, but I do think, yes, a hundred percent. And um, I do think we're at a place where we really need to, the adults need to model what those expectations look like. Um, and just make sure, again, it is just equitable across the board. Cause I, the students will be the first to tell you if a certain policy or expectation isn't working for them, right? And they, they do speak up. Um, but I think at the stage that we're on now, you know, with the, with a lot of the DIB work, it's important for the adults to model what those expectations are.
I have a question about the policy regarding the late bus. Um, I know we talked about that, but um, I think that's, this may not here, this is um, for the high school. Um, and I don't know if it's for the Concord kids as well, but um, when we talk about being consistent, transparent, um, some of the, the kids and the families have um, complained that I guess, I don't know if this is, this policy is for, up for, you know, it's, it's been, how long it's been in place, but um, the kids, they have to register and say, and decide whether they're going to take the late bus by a certain time like noon, you know, they still have a couple hours of school left. If I just don't think, I just want to know, is that consistent? Is that just for Mecca kids or? You know, because again, you know, my goal is to, I know, I want, I think the Mecca kids need to be a part, a, a, a conquered student, not just a Mecca student. And if there's policies that are different for Mecca students as caucus students, I don't think that's fair or equitable.
Of course, yeah. So, so we did. Yeah. Yisha and I did have very brief conversation about that. Um, and where that is it's part of the expectations that were in, in, in the uh, Metco handbook. And again, you know, the policy around, and it's not registering, is actually signing up uh, to say to the medical staff, hey, I'm staying after school and, and context matters here. When I was medical director, we had, I heard a lot of feedback from families who you know, at six, seven, eight PM were calling me asking where their kid, right? Where's my kid? They didn't call. They didn't notify me that they were staying after. I want to know if you know where they are. And I quickly thought, okay, one, this is a huge safety concern. And number two, there's no way to track if students, particularly our Boston Mecca students, whether or not they're staying after school or they're going to a friend's house in Concord or Carlisle or what have you, right? And so I instituted uh, uh, an expectation for students to say, if you ever are thinking about staying after school, you have until, and at the time, I think Barbara was here till about four PM. You had until at least till three PM to let Ms. Burgos know that you're staying after school. And Ms. Burgos simply took down the student's name and actually before she lea- she left every And actually before she le, she left every day, the last thing she did was to have a list of students and, and send that list to, to transportation, to John to say, hey, these, these are how many students, uh, late bus driver can expect. I was on that email. So if I ever get a call at six P M., seven P M. From a parent who's wondering where their child was, I can quickly look in that list and say, yep. John Doe is here. They stayed after school for track. You should be expecting them by nine P M. At Forest Hills, right? So it was a way to ensure that we had that we were, we were making sure that we were tracking the students that particularly were staying after school. And directly feedback that we heard from some of our families, because it wasn't just, you know, this five group of students who were consistently sort of staying after school and not notifying their parents. It was random. You know, we were here.
We're leaving kids behind.
We're leaving kids behind and
Much bigger impact.
It's a much, so yeah, right. And so.
I don't mind, but at the end of the day, but to sit there and add another stressor just for the medical kids that they have to sit there and get to the Mecca office by noon, I think is is just, I know the ki, the kids don't like it. The parents don't like it. I just, you know, I just, I don't know.
I mean.
At the end of the day is, 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 I feel reasonable.
Yeah. One of the
You know, the stressor during the day, I don't think is appropriate.
One of, one of the things I remember sort of saying to students when I was Mecca director was that you know, yes, they have till three P M. To let Ms. Burgos know, but you know what? We know, we're all busy, right? We're all humans. We get distracted, et cetera. If the students showed up at five fifty and it dawned on them that, oh, I did not let Ms. Burgos know that I'm taking a bus. You could probably go back, you know, I don't know, iPhone holds five years worth of text messages, but I would have students text me by forty-five, I forgot to sign up for the bus. Can you let so-and-so know that I'm taking a bus? And I will literally text John. John, you're gonna, you know, there are five additional students that didn't sign up. Just let the driver know. And that took care of it, right? So again, Miss Jay, go for it.
Now.
Do you want to join us up?
Come on.
Chair. Need a microphone. Need a microphone and a chair.
You're in the hot seat now.
We'll just be really brief because we're gonna, because we still have a few more reports due, so go ahead.
Basically because the high school has two lunches and they start at a particular time and they end at one. Kids are not able to come out of class, so they have until one o'clock. But if they do forgive and do come, we still give a pass because it was a problem of us not knowing who was on, and this is after him, uh, after Andrew, but it was a way that we weren't knowing who was on the bus and who wasn't. Then transportation would call us because this kid was on the bus and we didn't know it. So if anything happened on the bus and forsaken something bad and a parent calls us, if we don't know your child is on the bus, then it's the responsibility of Mecca and Concord Carlisle. So yes, I said it for one o'clock, but the majority of the time I'm there to six, cause most kids forget. You know what I'm saying? And I'll do it and just add to the list. So you know, it is to one. But at the same time with all the classes and having to be a new attendance policy and all of that. Kids are coming to our office without a pass from the teacher to come and get the pass. So that, you know, so it's, you know, the up-down type of thing.
And then if they don't get the pass, I heard, and I'm not sure if this is true, but I heard some kids say they don't get a pass, they're not allowed on the bus, and then they have to take public transportation home. Is that true?
Last year, that's what we did because they did not give us the information that we needed to put them on the bus. And I talked to, and I know exactly who you're talking about, because I talked to that parent and that parent didn't know. And that parent was fine with that job because.
Well, I'm not, as a parent, I'm not fine with that. So I think they think that's a safety hazard and I don't think it's, you know, just because they didn't get a pass from during the day, they're, they're, they're being forced to take public transportation home. I'm not.
Well, at, at, at the high school level, they have M B T A passes from Echo Inc.
Very student to student. Most of them are getting on the bus. So.
Yeah, okay. Alright, that sounds good. Thanks, Miss Jay.
One slide is back. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So moving on. So now I'm just going to get into the three D E I B reports. Implicit bias training, teacher diversification, and then I'll end on the bias report, uh, reporting system. So quickly this summer, and again, many, many thanks to our two superintendents, assistant superintendents, Kristen, Bob, and of course Dr. Hunter, who supported this initiative to ensure that our support staff were receiving the same implicit bias training that we provide to our faculty during the year through our P D paths. And so again, this year we had close to eighty-two support staff members who attended the implicit bias training that was facilitated by Ideas. We had instructors from Ideas who facilitated this training. And you know, the feedback overall, the support staff, and this is feedback also from the instructors. They were engaged. They definitely found the training meaningful. And because we, they were provided sort of practical ways in which they can confront their own biases, particularly when they are in conflict with another colleague or with students. And again, you know, at the very end of the, of the training, you know, some of the feedback that we gathered from, from staff where, you know, are we going to do this again? Is there an opportunity for the parent community to have this exact training? Great feedback, right? And so, you know, some of the next steps that I've listed on this slide again, is of course to offer this, this, uh, this, this training opportunity, again, before the start of the school year in the summer to our support staff. Partner with external, uh, community, uh, partners and organizations to again, provide this training opportunity to the parent community. And then of course, continue the work that I touched on earlier with, with Dr. Hunter collaborating with the C T A and the C C T A to establish the, the requirement for current and prospective educators in the future to enroll in the Ideas One Anti-Racist Practices in Schools, uh, P D offering. And so those are some of the next steps. But I do think, you know, you've heard in the past from Kristen and I about our very comprehensive list of P D offerings each year that we provide our faculty. Uh, we continue to provide a lot of that training. And I'm just very, very glad that we now have sort of a training workshop for our support staff who often have not been able to access these trainings. All right. Any questions on that?
I have a question on that. One, the, you have eighty-two staff members. What percentage of support is that? Do you know? Like, I don't know what eighty-two means. Like, do we have five hundred support members or do we have two, a hundred?
We, I believe when Denise on H R Director and I pulled together numbers, we were expecting upwards of three hundred, I believe, support staff overall, and that's inclusive tutors. You know, food services, maintenance, custodial, administrative assistance, our bus drivers, et cetera. We, in terms of the, in terms of the support staff who actually said they are were going to attend, it was upwards of a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen. Many of them could not attend due to number one, it was a Friday and folks had already made travel plans and whatnot. So that number did dwindle down to eighty-two. And some of those support staff in past years have been able to access some of our P D offerings through our P D paths. Right? And so you factor those variables in, you're not going to get all three hundred at the training, but I thought eighty-two of the support staff members who attended willingly came because this is new information for them. They had not participated in a training like in an implicit bias training in the past here in Concord or in other areas. And so they felt the need to be here on a Friday in the summer, uh, which I thought was, was excellent.
And do we have, um, new to here? Do we have numbers of faculty?
Oh, of course. Yes.
Have done this?
The faculty have been trained on multiple levels, including staff meetings that are mandatory. So we're
It's like on the one side.
For the faculty.
Okay. This is offering to offer onboarding process on your first slide, but I did, I was like, well, what about the people who have been here? Has this been retro? Has everybody?
Everyone is in there. All professional educators who are in their first five years are required to take the Ideas course. It's a twenty-four hour credit, credit course. So, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying. Like you said, in their first five years, all that, but, um, what about the teachers who have been here for twenty years?
We've used staff meetings, department meetings, grade level meetings. We've used other mandatory places to be sure we get a hundred.
Everybody. Okay. So, thank you.
Good question, Karen.
Great question.
Just fill, just fill an important gap for our support staff. We didn't have, they don't have built-in P D opportunities into their schedules.
All right. Update on teacher diversification. Before I touch on this slide, it's important to note that I have not yet met with Denise on to look at current twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Diversity demographics as it relates to our, our administrators, faculty, support staff and students. We are meeting mid-October to look at that data because we also have to update that information for the organization that we partnered with last year, M P D E. So I hope to give you a full overview of this, of this portion of the report in my quarter two report in the next.
That'd be great.
Right. But I do think it's important to note that again, in our district strategic plan, we have set a goal that by twenty-twenty-five, twenty percent of newly hired CPS and C C R Z administrators, faculty and support staff will identify as people of color. And that one hundred percent of the staff will be retained from year to year. If you look back to my, the end of the year report that I provided to the school committee in the spring, I go deeper into what those demographics were last year. If you need me to send that over to members of the committee, I'm happy to, uh, just as a refresher. But that information is there. Last year, we were grateful to also receive a low over thirty-one thousand dollars to support our teacher diversification efforts. Denise on and I submitted. And we received these funds from Desi. And, and this year we were able to submit to that grant again. And we did ask for additional funds to support our efforts this year. And so on this slide, I've noted there that we have requested eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars in grant funds from Desi. Forty-eight thousand, nine seventy-five for CPS and thirty-four thousand, nine nine five for C C R S D. So we're still waiting to hear back from Desi. We are confident that we will receive these funds. Cause I do know, you know, last year as a requirement to all districts that received grant funds, we were required to also participate in a professional learning community. A P L C with close to fifty other districts. And towards the end of our P L Cs, Desi actually invited us, Concord, to be one of the presenters for our last meetings because again, I, and they actually reached out personally to me to hear more about some of our efforts and strategies and they were impressed. And so I, I, I am confident that, um, that we will receive funding this year as well, again, to support all of our teacher diversification efforts. All right. All right. Bias reporting. Uh, this is a big lift. This is a big initiative this year. And I actually presented some information to our English, C C H's English Department this afternoon about our bias reporting system, just so they hear a little bit more, but I'm going to speak to that more shortly. But I want to share with you that you know, our bias reporting system has really been a three-year process, you know, really started in, in, uh, as a conversation in our admin team and we worked to sort of, you know, talk through the different barriers that, you know, and different challenges that we could experience with our bias reporting system. We invited last year here at the school committee, we invited the Belmont Human Rights Council Chair to come in and share some feedback for us. It wasn't here at the school committee, it was a D E I B uh, district-wide committee last year, and she shared some great feedback. The admin team met with Belmont's D E I B Director, who also provided some, some feedback because in Belmont, they have actually been able to successfully implement their bias reporting system. And I think they are in year re this year with their system. And so we learned a lot from the folks over at Belmont. But fast forward, last spring in May, we were able to present the bias reporting system. We held an assembly at the middle school. We leveraged the Celtics playbook student leaders to present a lot of this information to their peers. And the goal was to pilot this bias reporting system just with Concord Middle School students. And it was extremely successful. Literally right after that assembly, we had five reports come in um, within the hour. Right? And I think in that moment, in that assembly, students were very attentive and I think they left feeling empowered that there is a tool that they can access to report incidences. Now I will note that as we work to fully implement this bias reporting system, it's important to note that not every incident that is investigated might end up being an actual bias incident. And I say that because some of the reports that we received last year at the middle school were actually not bias incidents, right? And I don't want to give examples because then I'm giving, you know. But it's important that we understand what that means because yes, this tool exists. And I do believe that again, students do feel empowered to use it. But they are also using it in a way that they are not only noticing certain incidents may be biased, but they are also noticing other incidents that may not even be related. And I think part of our implementation process, and I'm going to transition to the next slide, is educating our community about what is a bias incident? And what is a hate crime, right? Those differences do matter. And I think educating our community about what this process is all about, what is the, you know, the, 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 the reason or why, why this district is implementing this bias reporting system is important. And so a part of our implementation timeline includes meeting with literally every, almost every stakeholder group, all stakeholder groups. And, and presenting a high-level overview of what our bias incident response protocol is and what our reporting form is all about. So as I mentioned, met with the English, C C H's English Department this afternoon to give them a high-level overview of, of what our, uh, our bias reporting system is about. I am meeting with various departments across the district, high school, all their departments, middle school faculty, all the elementary uh, faculty, the support staff of the high school. We have student assemblies coming up, both at the middle school as a follow-up, but particularly at the high school, Katie and Brian have scheduled a school-wide D E I B assembly where a portion of that time will be dedicated to helping students again, understand what is to come, you know, with, with our bias reporting system. There's a parent night that I'm hoping to schedule with, with our parent community sometime in December. And then of course, you all, school committee, heard a lot about our bias reporting system last year through many of our presentations. And I do assure you, nothing has changed based on the feedback you all provided that I took to the admin team and made revisions to. So the reporting protocol that you all saw. And I'm just going to preview that very quickly. So this right here, this, this protocol that you all saw last year, right? Has not changed. Nothing has changed. The feedback you provided, the feedback I gathered from students, feedback I gathered from the admin team have helped finalize this protocol. And so again, just making sure that, that all stakeholder groups in our community understand where this is coming from is going to be key. Cause one of the feedback that we heard from Belmont and, you know, they did allude to some challenges around ensuring that folks were actually using the form. They did allude to some challenges around marketing this reporting system. So everyone in their community understood the, the what, the how, the where to find this tool. And so part of that education is making sure that folks are aware of different avenues in which they can access this reporting form. All right. I'll pause there.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yeah, sure. You do.
So, okay, there's a lot here and you just said a lot. So I just want to make sure I have this clear. This says you, right, obviously you just rolled this out with the middle school and you're, there was, you said last year, is, is this at the This says you, right, obviously you just rolled this out with the middle school and your, there was, you said last year, is, is this at the high school?
No, so, so currently the middle school is the only school that actually have a bias report in form.
Okay.
Place for their students.
Okay.
And that, and we started, we piloted the form back in the spring and May.
Okay.
Just to again, gather additional feedback. It was successful to roll out. Students did firmly understand why. We were implementing this tool. And now. The goal is to educate. High school students. And I think we're going to go all the way down to about fourth grade students, fifth grade students. Make sure the students are understanding where this is coming from. Simultaneously also educating the parent community as well. And again, through those faculty meetings, department meetings. I'm also meeting with our educators as well.
So, thank you.
Other questions? Yes.
Very basic question. But on all of these dates, the like October fourth, October tenth, are these. Is the whole purpose of that meeting, the bias, the incident reporting? Okay. So it's not like a bullet. Or it's not an agenda item of a broader meeting?
No, it's, it's the whole hours dedicated. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And but I'm. I took over the department time, the department meeting time, which is great. I mean, the great support, you know, all the, all the. Members of the leadership team of the high school stepped up and in a matter of, you know, I, I shared this timeline with the leadership team of the high school. Last Monday and, you know, I left that meeting and within an hour I had dates ready to go. And the first one was today.
These are just with the teachers?
Yep. Some, many of the dates are with the, and then embedded in there, you will see there. Like, you know, November ninth, for example, is the, is the student, is the CCH's DEIB assembly. The middle school students are going to. Through the Celtics playbook trainings that we're going to do starting in October, we're going to dedicate some time during those trainings. To remind students about the bias reporting system, that it does exist, where to find it on the school website. And so forth.
And which was segue into my next question, which was, you know, I don't need to know any details, but you got obviously kind of a slew of them right after the launch. Did you get any, have you gotten any since then or?
We have. We did, we did get two new incidents. Which prompted me to actually, it was a reminder for me to create a different form for this school year. Because every year we want to create a brand-new form. So again, track, exactly. But yes, we did. And I, and Justin Cameron has been great. He's, he's on top of it. And actually, the great thing about us using Google Forms completely free. Is that you can create notifications. So if a report comes in, you get, you know, you get an email. And so. So it's important that obviously the principals or their designee stays on top of those, of those incidents when they come in.
And then are you sitting down with, I think you have a student advisory group.
Yes.
The high school, are you talking with them to get their feedback even on like contents of the form, kind of like you did with us last spring?
Yeah, so that happened back in the spring. I did a small focus group with middle and high school students. And it was inclusive of, of medical students, but they did find a cha, a lot. Two of those medical students actually found it very challenging to stay out to school for that. So one of them actually ended up zooming in. But yes, I did have a small focus group and those students were phenomenal. They really helped design the current form as it exists. At the middle school. And that same form is the exact same form with the exact same questions that all the schools will have across the board.
Has that changed since last year?
Has not.
Okay.
No changes. If anything, honestly, if anything, I, I just need to embed. On that first page. On that first page at the top of the Google form, I list some, it was almost like some FAQs that are at the top of that form. I need to make sure that somewhere in there states that. Employees, adults, teachers, anyone who interfaces with students, with children. Cannot submit a form anonymously because we are all by law mandated reporters. I need to just make that crystal clear because. Has come up here and there. And I, I don't think that's in the back of some of our educators' minds that by law they are mandated reporters. And so. Just a friendly reminder. So.
I was, I have one more question. So it says, so that's going to be rolled out at the high school, it says in November.
So the goal is to roll. The entire incident response protocol and report in form by the, within the month of January twenty twenty-fourth, the new school year.
Okay.
So that gives us plenty of time. Again, the education piece is important because that was the, one of the critical feedbacks we heard from Belmont. You have to take the time to ensure folks understand why this is being rolled out, where they can act, you know. We got to take time to do that. And I think we've started early with that process. And so. I'm confident we'll get there in January.
And so what are your plans for continuing for the likes? So once you get this rolled out in January and now it's June for next year. For whatever it is, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right.
Are we? I realize this is new, but like me looking at this is like, say it's been like two years. Just the timeline, like why would we wait until, I don't know, I just feel like, like with, with ninth grade academy, when those kids come in. Are they getting it right away?
So I will say.
Kids wait till November to get this, like get it right away.
High school students. By that November date, and again, this is an all CCHS, all school.
Right.
Assembly, they will understand where this, so at least for the high school, this form will be ready to go.
Okay.
In my mind, I'm saying as a district, district-wide, looking at all the schools. I want to make sure that by January, every single school has this form. Embedded in their website, students are aware, families are aware, faculty are aware. But it's important that the students, particularly at the high school. If we can get middle, high school. Up and running. At least by November. That will be great.
But then I'm saying, so go, like going forward, like is this something, I just find sometimes things, new things like this happen and there's this big rollout. And then in years, and as years go on, people go, well, everybody knows this. Well, no, because there's always, there's always new freshmen. There's always new kids who move into town. So it's like, it, it, do you have a plan for in the future of keeping this going?
So at the high school, we, all ninth graders go through our ideas implicit bias training. Part of that rollout this year is to make sure we are allotted some time during that training beyond the assembly. To make sure students understand this bias reporting system. That training is going to ha, continue to happen every single year. At the middle school, it is the Celtics playbook initiative. And so again, that's another opportunity to make sure this. This reporting system is embedded as students are going through that training. The, one of the focus areas now is to make sure that our elementary students, at least up to fourth grade. Get that same training. And then we're, Justin Cameron, middle school principal, and I actually. Thinking through ways in which we can leverage the Celtics playbook student leaders to come over to the elementary schools and be the ones to present this information. Because there is a student. Version of this presentation that I'm going to be given, that does the Celtics playbook initiative, student leaders. Created last year. And nothing has changed in that. So they can take that presentation and bring it over to the elementary side and helps. Our, you know, younger kids understand this work. That'll be important. But again, we're working very closely with the principals to come up with a date. Because we're not just talking about one elementary school, we have three. And so we just have to be mindful of, you know, when that is able to happen.
And not to, I know this isn't maybe the right place, but we are from Carlisle. And you have come to us before. Has anybody from Carlisle reached out you to, because I, did we have the Celtics last year? Yeah. So I just.
Oh, yeah, 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 you did. Yeah, it was excellent. Starting to.
I'll talk to our. Your DEI and tell them to, yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It is absolutely. Any other questions? And I think I'm going to wrap up. I'm not going to spend, you know, I, I was going to touch on some of the information, some of the reports.
You can bring it the next time. You definitely.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is more about data and what we're actually seeing from the reports. And I think it's probably more appropriate. To have that conversation not in a public because there are some identifiers in, in those forms and don't want to give out too much information. But again, the form was effectively used by students last year, which is a great sign. Last thing I'm going to say is, and I know, and, and at the end of your reports, one of the questions was, you know. Budget impacts, how can the school committee help? And this is a statement that I've written. I would love to just read it and end. And, and there, the sustained support from the school committee in the town of Conkers, FinCom in favor of the school's budget. Contributes significantly to achieving our collective goals of promoting DEIB within our school community. There are repercussions of budget cuts directly impact the expansion and sustainability of resources linked directly to DEIB efforts in the school district. Adequate budget allocation directly influences our ability to achieve several critical objectives, including but not limited to. Attracting diverse keynote speakers and workshop facilitators. Funding is essential to ensure experienced, competent experts. Individuals who bring valuable perspectives on DEIB continuously come to Concord and, and support our educators in their growth. Toward cultural proficiency. Competitive wages for educators, a well-funded budget offers competitive salaries, enabling us to. Attract and retain diverse and culturally competent educators who add to a more diverse teaching and learning environment. Across our schools. Support for socioeconomic diversity I know has come up. Providing financial resources is essential to ensuring that families with financial constraints do not have to be overburdened with choosing between their child's ability. To participate fully in educational experiences, including but not limited to athletics, extracurricular activities, field trips. Or putting food on the table, paying the month's rent or mortgage. Lastly, equitable educational experience, a budget that places the well-being of students. Ensures that they can engage in various activities that enrich their educational experience and foster equity, inclusion. And belonging. All right. So. Huge, huge impact in terms of budget. This work would not be where it is right now, twenty twenty-three without. A healthy budget that is approved by you all and FinCom. So, thank you. Share your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, if you don't mind sending your.
I already asked for that. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Already asked for that. But so we'll get your presentation that I'll put in our packet. We'll link it after the meeting. Anything that you didn't get ahead of the me, meeting that you're seeing in the meeting. After it's been discussed, then it becomes public. So then we'll attach it to the agenda. So I really want to thank you for coming, Andrew. You, your reports were very thorough. You gave us a lot of reading material to prep for our meeting tonight. And so I'll just leave it to the committee to see if we have any other further discussion. Questions before we move on.
No, but I just want to give one piece of feedback that I thought was great. I really liked hearing the direct voices of. I forget the gentleman's name, the interim echo director and Deb on the reports. I thought that was really excellent, something I wasn't necessarily expecting. Because we, you were the official person to which we submitted the report. I just, I, I liked that quite a bit. So thank you, Deb, and.
We are a team. So it's important that they get a.
My feedback. And thank you for being first, Andrew.
Yeah.
You were first in our new process. So we appreciate it. And you know, we're a work in progress ourselves. So.
Right. See you soon.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thanks, Deb.
Yep, yep. Can I ask a quick question? Do you guys, just that he mentioned it in his, thank you about. Actually regardless of just teachers in general, I know in Carlisle, we have an issue where like we have. I don't think we have any teachers who teach in Carlisle and can afford to live in Carlisle. Do you guys have that? So we don't have any teachers who teach in Carlisle that can afford to live in Carlisle. Is that a huge problem here? And is there anything that's ever been spoken about it?
We have a lot of educators, I think, that do live in Concord, that teach in Concord. I don't know.
I don't know the number.
Percentage, but.
But there's, because I know sometimes it's like.
Huge, huge.
There are teachers that live in Concord for sure.
Yeah. And I'm just thinking of that with like for housing, like you guys are different. You have rentals, like we have no rentals in Carlisle.
Right.
But do you like with the whole new thing with the MBTA and that zoning, like, has there ever been talk of having some sort of, we had this talk. Recently in Carlisle because they wanted to make some apartments for firefighters. That like, right, if, if you join the fire force, you'd get a good deal on this rent.
Andrew and I have certainly talked about it because there are communities across the country who are building housing for teachers to draw. Not only diverse teachers, but teachers period.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't know how it works here, Carrie, but.
Okay. I just didn't know if that was.
It's odd for sure.
I didn't know if there was anything that was a discussion here.
Yeah.
So. Okay, thank you. Guys.
All right. Go ahead. So moving on to our student wellness and mental health discussion before I turn it over to Dr. Hunter. I just wanted to say to remind everybody in the public, you know, we recently completed our goal. So our goal number five. I believe, I actually wrote it down, is that the joint school committees will ensure that the district provides the necessary programs and services. To support student mental health, which we recognize as a required precursor for academic achievement. So with that in mind. We asked the superintendent to provide truly a comprehensive overview of what we're doing. To support students' mental health so that they can be present for academic achievement. And we wanted to look at that from a fiduciary standpoint, of course, because we want to, you know, ensure that. You know, we're supporting these services. And then I also wanted Dr. Hunter to share with us. How these programs and services truly impact our students. Because I think in order for us to evaluate that. We really need to understand how these programs work and how they're positively impacting our kids. So with that. Dr. Hunter. Thank you. And while the screen comes up, just a few notes, and certainly Kristen should chime in at any point. To put it all in one place is difficult because it's actually a fiber for us through so much of what we do now. So this is a first pass at that. In terms of gathering the fiscal. Resources that are, you know, significantly supporting that, it's also difficult to break that out completely. So really, this is meant to be an overview of things that are very specifically mental health and student wellness. While referring you to some of the structures that are in place for all kids. And have been in some cases, just to start to make this comprehensive. So this is a work in progress. I would say we've. Looked at it as an administrative team this morning, continue to fine tune and think of other things we could add. So we're. Really giving it to you at a moment in time, thinking this is pretty, pretty iterative as we, as we grow it. Um, so, yeah, you know, like, yeah. Uh, so highlights here, and what I've done is try to come up with a way to present from the broadest-based. Tier one work we're doing with all kids, all the way to the acute kids in crisis who are out of district. So that's the full continuum of both proactive social emotional learning, all the way to the middle ground of different services we're offering. And we're building that bank of tools all the time, all the way to the kids who really just can't be in the schools right now because the needs are too acute. So, and I'm going to do this at a really high level. I've just shared the sheet with you and we'll certainly attach it. And really make this the beginning of a conversation. I don't at all think it's the complete conversation. So responsive classroom five, fly five, you've heard a lot about that at K five. So we've noted that because it's now. Across the elementary schools and serving as a really strong foundation for social emotional learning. And coping skills and all that comes with that curriculum, plus the classroom structures that are building connections. You can note the funds that have been allocated to that. Really, the funds that are here are FY twenty-four funds. So that you can see what that is. There is an asterisk on that one because CEF was also able to help us with that. Desa's the screener. I guess before I go to that, there's a note here, and this we haven't flushed out and are still debating how to best do that. Home base at the middle school is a strong place for that. And the health curriculums across all of the schools are a strong place for that. To have direct instruction. And then I'm going to put an asterisk next to flex block, which is the newest way we're approaching it at the high school. So how you quantify all of that exactly, but the structures are changing, the content is changing in a number of places that all kids have access to. So we'll keep talking about that, but health curriculum alone now has very strong curric, lessons attached to mental well-being. And I think that's okay. Like, I don't think there necessarily has to be like a correlation of funds in every category, because to your point. There's no funds with Flexbox that you can quantify, but it is a program that does many things, one of which is, you know. Well, yeah, yeah. Okay. So thank you. Um, I get that. Jess is the screener that we're using right now, K through ten. So you can see that that's noted. I think we've mentioned that to you in other reports. Care Solus, I know you're familiar with, that are the costs associated with that referral service. Cartwheel is our newest addition.
I'm sorry, on the care solus, is that? Is that like, you get billed for that afterwards? Like, I'm just wondering what. is that like, you get billed for that afterwards? Like, I'm just wondering what, when I saw that funding, like, is that what you gave upfront or so many kids used it? And so that's what they turned.
It's the subscription fee. And then the referrals, whatever happens within that subscription fee is is covered. So it's a flat fee annually per each district. And then however many referrals come out of that to providers is excellent. The more, the better, obviously. Cartwheel is the newest tool that we're embarking on and getting started with at the high school that will actually offer connections to virtual certified clinicians that we can directly link students with. So you can see the cost there. Is that similar in structure, annual fee? Flat fee for a number of seats. It's a little different because it is about the number of seats. We have 50 seats at the high school for the 25,000.
And what if you go over the 50?
We can't go.
You can't go over the 50. Okay. I wouldn't want to go over the 50. I mean, this is that.
It is static. So if a student improves enough that they aren't going to use that that provider anymore, or they get moved over to a long-term provider that's going to see them for, you know, the the longer term, then we can substitute in.
Okay.
So it's not just 50 kids. It will likely be more.
At a given period of time.
In a given moment. Fifty, 50s are CCHS a lot. Professional Development, which takes form in a lot of different formats, PD paths, consultants, Concord Fellows, ideas has been part of that. You know, it's hard to totally break out DEI and mental health because they're all, belonging is a big part of feeling, feeling good. So we're not able to totally aggregate them. General Ed Services, it seemed worth noting, the professionals that are available into our, in our schools for all kids. Each elementary school has a counselor and a psychologist. The middle school has four guidance counselors and an adjustment counselor and two psychologists. High school, we have eight guidance counselors, three adjustment counselors. That includes the more recent Metco counselor position and four psychologists, including one that we've transformed the position a little bit. So it's more of a coordinator wellness oversight and organizational person to keep the spokes together on all of these different tools. So we're excited by that, and we were able to do that without any additional FTEs.
And the. Are these just basically consultants?
Like, no, these are our full-time staff.
Oh, they are FTEs, you mean, without any.
Additional FTE, yeah. And then general education, these are either available to all kids or more specific kids who have needs. And I'll start with ninth grade academy, which we absolutely believe is connected to student wellness and mental health. That was the, one of the biggest driving impetuses for that program. Lighthouse is there. That's a specialized regular education setting for some kids more acute, often having come out of the hospital and returning back to school, and we're able to support them without having to necessarily be in the special education world, which has its own nuances, but really important that we've got some general ed supports at a pretty high level of acuity. Challenges are more ongoing, oh, sorry, ongoing service for students with a broader need of goals that are in the regular ed environment, but with some ongoing support and smaller setting, we can keep them needing the more significant special education services and often do what I call probably a tier two kind of support system for them.
Is, is this what you, or was at one time called network?
Yes.
And it was only ninth grade.
Yeah, I just saw it because it said 15. Yeah, because my son was in there.
But it's a good connection, Carrie. Special education services, obviously IEPs would drive those, and we just noted that, and we named the providers that we have. Seemed reviewing and obvious, Angel will come and do this with you more specifically, our intensive social emotional special education programs. Branch is the program at Alcott for K through five, currently supporting 19 students. Access is the middle school program currently supporting 13 students, and Anchor is the high school program currently supporting 31 students. We named what staff is in those settings and estimated, I used, I didn't look up every person's salary. So those are estimates in terms of cost for the programs. And you can see it's not insignificant. But when you run the numbers, and I did this exercise to again validate, if you run the numbers, all those, all of those kids would be out of district. And to put it up against a tuition, even when you apply Circuit Breaker, you multiply times this number of kids, you're in the millions of dollars of savings for keeping them in-house. And obviously, it's better for the kids to be here with us. And out of district placements, just because it seemed worth noting. And again, this is probably one of our biggest drivers of out of district placements right now is that despite those intense programs that are here, we can't serve all kids. They become too acute. So high school, what age, we have 12 students in out of district settings. And K eight, we have four right now for social, emotional, mental health needs. And it's been the biggest driver of ongoing, you know, out, who, what is sending kids out of district? It is the mental health needs when they're beyond the capacity of the schools to do here. And our hope is always to stabilize them in those settings and then see if return is an option. And that's always the goal is return. So. So that's the very high level, big picture. But I think grounds us nicely, actually, as we talk more on things coming up, the forum on the third, the budget process, and we'll, we'll be sure this is a live overview and can serve as that ongoing collector of information.
This is great. I think this is really helpful. It's helpful to see it all, you know, even just in chart form, like we, we have all the programming in there. You have, you know, the costs associated with it. And I think it helps us all, again, as you said, as we approach the budget and see what we're doing in our district to serve the kids that we have.
Yeah. And to me, as we know, last year, we talked about mental health as a, I hate to say it, quantify it this way, but as a budget driver. We taught, and then, you know, we talk about it as a goal of ours. So to me, I think being able to quantify that, not just with dollars, but with number of students served, the intensity of how we serve them. I is very helpful to me, and I think it and it ultimately will help inform us in these next couple of months as we talk about the FY25 budget and how to predict.
Yeah. And looking forward to our mental health forum that I do have to plug that on October 3rd. I do think that, you know, for parents that are coming to that, looking for what are the resources that we have in our district, this is a huge, it's a huge resource that we do have. And we had some discussions with Lori about, you know, we put the intensive programs out there, and we have a continuum of services, and they're right in front of us on the website. And maybe like this will lead to something like that in terms of mental health, so that people will know what we have to offer when you are in fact in crisis.
It reminds me of kind of what we did when we had Deb Dixon come in last year to talk about what are the programs and services available when your kids have learning disabilities. So this is kind of. And I know that's what Kristen's building with the counselors who are going to host the forum. So great, there'll be a record of that to share, for sure.
Maybe I can just make a clarification because I think often.
I'm going to ask you to grab a micro, microphone just before my friend comes out.
Good anticipation.
Yeah.
I just want to make a clarification between socio-emotional skills
Right.
and mental health.
Yes.
They're not the same, although they're obviously very related. So socio-emotional skills, these are called the five castle competencies, and it's self-awareness. I, I can know all my emotions, self-management, I can sort of control and deal with all my social awareness, social management, making friendships and so forth, and then decision-making. That's different from mental health and well-being, which this is taught mostly through our socio-emotional lessons in Responsive Classroom and Fly Five. Mental health is part of our health curriculum. And that is, what does it mean to be mentally healthy, to have brain health? And what are the ways that that can go wrong? And, and what do we do about those? So examples are, you know, feeling stressed, feeling being depressed, being diagnosis depressed, schizophrenic, even having suicide ideation. Those are all in the mental health. And we do address them as delineated by the Massachusetts new health standards. I just wanted to make sure that, that we do both. We just do them in different arenas.
Yeah. And obviously, the hope is the proactive social emotional skill development will offset some of the growing needs that become the mental health problems. So.
Carrie?
Just a quick comment. I think there are two things that stood out to me. Uh, one, I, I really appreciate seeing it laid out like this. It's just helpful to kind of see all the, all the pieces. But I think the things that stood out were, one, just how clear it is, what, what a commitment you all have made, we all have made to to mental health. And I think that the biggest thing, I actually love the line items that you can't quantify because they've become structural changes.
Right.
Because I think that this is not like a moment in time. This is a reality that we live in. So seeing things like the Flex Bot Block and curriculum changes and things that like, you know, I, I like, I think that that's
Yeah.
really.
Thank you for including that because you're right.
Yeah.
It wasn't what we exactly asked.
On that connection without the, that.
Right.
So that stood out to me. But thank you for everything you're doing.
It's we, right? It is we. It's all of us and all the way into the classroom and beyond.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a really quick thank you, first of all. And I appreciate your distinction, and maybe that kind of lends to the question I'm going to ask. I would like to see more opportunities for the Carlisle and Concord students to meet before they get to the high school. I don't know how we do that. And I think that will lend itself to maybe alleviating some of the social and emotional, because I know some of the kids are has anxiety about that, you know, we're the Carlisle kids who come to Concord.
Yeah.
And they're terrible. I'd love to see how we can just kind of mitigate some of that and create some of those social interactions before they get here. I think they would go a long way.
Thank you. Because really, the only avenue is sports. It's just sport. It's the only thing. So if you don't do that, I don't even think there's much crossover in music instruction or any of the other arts programs. It was just, you'd get lucky, maybe going to Emerson Brol or something like that.
Yeah. And it is a thing. I know when I get the roster, my kids want to know, where are the Carlisle kids? Do I have someone on my team?
Yeah.
Of course.
Understands me and where, where I live.
Yeah.
I get that.
All right. Anyone else? No. Okay, this is a Concord heavy item, so Alexa's going to do this one, too.
All right. So I did put this all in the agenda overview, but tonight, I want all of us to chit chat about the, a proposal on the table. So just for some background, and I know that we all understand this, but just so that there's context for anyone watching. Currently in Concord, our town meeting advances three separate warrants for the three main operating budgets in the town of Concord. Those warrants include the operating budget for the town of Concord, the operating budget for the CPS school district, you know, and then the regional budget, which is essentially the CCHS budget. So we have three separate warrant articles. That's sort of the status quo of how we do things. This summer, there was a proposal floated out to Carmen Reese, who is our town moderator who runs town meeting. Would there be interest in putting together, instead of three separate warrant articles, a single warrant article that encompassed all three of those budgets? That is, for example, the way you all do it in Carlisle. I will note that this wasn't just some sort of not that it matters. You know, pedestrian walking by saying, I have an idea. It was a member of the finance committee. So it wasn't, you know, there was some context to the the suggestion. I also preface this by saying, ultimately, we are being asked to discuss it today, and we are being asked to weigh in. Ultimately, the decision will not be ours. That decision on how to put forth these warrant articles or single warrant article ultimately rests with the select board, but Tracy, the sort of the, the leadership of all the different chair, like the chairs of all the different boards did have a meeting. We all agreed that, again, we would discuss it with our committee, get some feedback. So ultimately today, you know, as a stakeholder in this, we're just looking for some discussion, feedback, thoughts, concerns. I'd love everyone to weigh in if possible. And I'll go from there.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
They say why? Like what? Like, what's the pros of putting it in one?
Sure. Oh, well, I think, I think this is for us to discuss some of the pros and cons.
I just, I'm just say from our, as a town has one, and I go to, I volunteer at our town meeting and all that. So the school always gets pulled out. School always gets, but the school always gets pulled out of that warrant to be discussed separately. So that's why I was kind of like, why are you putting it back in when your school is already separated? Like, we have a warrant, like, we have our warrant out of our total budget, and somebody always stands up and says, hold line 23, which is the school budget. It's pulled out as a hold, so they'll vote on, you know, the rest and then vote on that separately. So you already have that. You already have your schools pulled out. Why put them in? You, somebody to stand up.
Which maybe you have, you have one article and they pull out a section, a line item.
Yeah. It's not always, it's not always just school, but I'm saying.
We, you, but always someone makes a motion from the floor to the same way we could do with our.
Now, this past year, it didn't get pulled out. I think something else got pulled out. Usually, so typically, something gets pulled out.
Last year was like the first time since I've been here in 10 years that it did not get pulled out.
So you've, this is good information. So you feel like.
Because that was my, one of my concerns. I was like, are we, could we possibly be setting ourselves up for you know, as town meeting, attending town meeting is a big commitment. It can be days, it can be, in, even in, on those multiple days, it can be hours. My, my, one of my concerns was exactly that. Are we setting ourselves up for what could become like, go from like a five-hour meeting to an eight-hour meeting if people continually try to pull, because when you pull it out, you have to debate the merits of pulling it out. Then you have to debate second, you know, we all know how those parliamentary procedures kind of go, which so I echo that concern, and it's good to know.
And can I just ask, Carrie, wait, can I just, Carrie, one thing about being pulled out? Do you feel like the region has been pulled out or Carlisle public?
I think, well, we no, do we even put?
Do you separate those? And you must.
I don't feel like there are, no.
So those are not separate.
You just, no. One line item for school.
Yeah, like this is our, we just got our budget the other day. Yeah.
They'll have another line item. I'm sorry.
It's a separate region. Separate, so then they, they take out two line items or just the.
No, I've never, my.
I've never answered a question, Carla.
Never, right.
It surprises me a little, actually.
Yeah, it's normally just the holes, because like our, you know, they, they just, they look at the number and go, that whole school budget, let's talk about that. But they normally don't drill down. They just want to know why we're you know.
Yeah.
Spending so much. And we get a lot of pullback. Sorry, that, when you were just saying about the, the social emotional and the DEI and all that, and our funding. I don't know if you guys get, like, we get pushback on that. Like, why aren't you spending money on STEM? Why are you spending on social emotional fluff and stuff?
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Can you remind us about?
Court, will you go near the microphone before?
About protocol at town meeting, is it in fact a long debate requiring a majority vote, or is it one of those things where ten citizens make it happen? Do we know protocol?
It's school.
Will we hold on an item?
Oh, for pulling, at least in ours, for putting, like, I can just stand up and say, hold, and it gets held.
So it's not a big debate that'll, five hours. Okay, okay.
No.
Okay.
It feels like a consent agenda, Jen.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
But he just says, oops, don't just run that one by me. I want to slow that down.
Okay.
Taking it out of the bundle.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Like, the way that we do it now, like, Dr. Hunter and chairs present what our budget is, what our proposed budget is to the town, what it costs, kind of the high level of it. Would that all be scrapped? Would it just be the schools are going to get X?
So, no.
And I'll answer in my history. Carlisle's the exception on this one, where the FinCom over there presents the regional budget. In my history with a unit, I don't know what word to you, unified omnibus, whatever word we're using, but we're using. The schools still looked at their own presentations.
There would still be, okay.
The select board would move the warrant. So in this year, if, if we decided to move forward with this, and it would be Mr. Dane moves that you know, the town budget is X.
Yeah.
Then we would still, as citizens, have the opportunity to hear specifically from Carrie LaFleur, talking about some of the nuance and detail of the town budget, and also Dr. Hunter, about some of the nuance and detail about the school budgets. We did discuss that in our leadership meeting, but ultimately it's a single motion made by the chair of the select board.
And then who, so, so in on its face, I like this idea. I'm just not really sure about the accountability of it. So like, if, if, for example, is it FinCom says, we think that instead of giving a guideline to the school,
If if, for example, is it FinCom says, we think that instead of giving a guideline to the schools. For the region, for the for CPS and for the town, would it just be, we think the town ought to spend Y for the next year? And then it's up to the different departments to determine how they get to Y?
Well, great question.
Great question.
So I believe it was in two thousand nineteen, there was a, I don't even know the. Appropriate terminology, but um some sort of regularly, I don't know, something put in place at town meeting. Um, that necessitated that the FinCom. Issue three guidelines, one for each budgeting unit. So that is newish. Um, what we, so we discussed this exact question in the leadership sort of meeting. Um, and because I had so.
Question.
So presently, I believe this finance committee would still have to issue three guidelines. There is nothing to say that they can't all be. Three percent, three percent, three percent. Um, and my. Concern, I don't know if this is a concern. I talked to a little bit about that, saying if we're going to do this, to me, it makes sense. To issue sort of a single guideline, three percent, three percent, three percent. And I think, and it got me thinking, too. One of the things that I think is tricky. Um, you know, the the finance committee is necessary, it's valuable, their role is. Super important. They do all of the analysis to evaluate our short term and our long term fiscal health as as a town. That's unbelievably important work, and I think it it provides a tremendous amount of value. What I think gets tricky. Is so, so when they say. You know, we believe that an increase, a budget increase of three percent year over a year will keep the town in a good fiscal position. I get that. I think this could be an opera, and what I what I think becomes more confusing and less valuable. My opinion is when they say enough that three percent, the schools get the, not even the schools, Concord Carlisle High School gets this. Concord Public Schools get this and the town gets this. So.
From FinCom or?
From the finance committee, which is, you know, what 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 they do now. So they have the idea of what the overall fiscal health is, and then they say. And then essentially the individual guidelines are essentially them saying, and of that guide, of that macro guideline, here's what we're gonna. Alec, or you know, here's what we recommend to allocate to you. I think this could be a wonderful opportunity, again, speaking for myself. To to just to to do this, to single guideline, you know, make it more equitable across the units. And again, if there were. Nuanced conversations to be had among the leadership, that's different, but.
Yeah.
Court.
I I think the uh value of it is that ultimately citizens see it as one obligation. Uh, that they have to support or not. And. I think we should at least pilot it. I think it goes with the presumption that FinCom would issue one guideline with the expectation that. We do more work within the units upfront so that we bring a unified agreement and share the pain to the extent we have to. Um, at town meeting.
Totally.
Um, so I think the idea of uh individual guidelines that would uh have FinCom. Trying to dictate to the different units when really their concern is bottom line, what can this hand, this uh town manage and. Carrie and her team are experts at that side of the house, and Lori and her team are experts at this side of the house with the school committee. I think it has the great advantage if it all works. So I'd I'd love to see a three year pilot and, you know, analyze it. Uh, I think what it does is it minimizes or even avoids uh playing off one unit against another on the floor of town meeting, which may. Be necessary when we're divided the way we are, but it's not a good look. Um, and at the end of the day, doesn't really benefit the citizens to whom we we go to uh seek support every year. I'd like to give it a try.
I mean, I just look at Wayland, Sudbury, our neighbors.
Yeah.
Way to do it.
Yeah, I did forget to tell to sort of inject that part into the narrative. We seem to be an outlier here.
Yes, and and Lori did say any other school she's been with, they do it that way.
Carrie LaFleur, she was saying that our town manager, same thing, like I've never, this is unique here.
Unique.
So.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious, has anybody done the footwork on the select board side to talk to? Sudbury or Wayland and see how.
I don't know. I don't believe so. I mean, I don't, we could.
I don't know if they've got that idea.
Yeah, we, I did, I did it last week at FinCom. I said, you know, I think you should. Talk to Carlisle, like our neighbors in Carlisle do this exact thing and they're doing, because there were questions about the regional budget. I said, well, Carlisle does it every year this way. They.
But Sudbury, they like size town.
Yes.
Similar demographics.
And they also regional budget.
Right, that's what I'm saying there.
Yeah. We can definitely ask for that.
More.
Yeah, that's a good point.
By the same, so, and we're talking about a a sim, maybe a little bit bigger school system, but it's pretty close.
Right, yeah.
Oh, and Sudbury.
And Sudbury.
A little bigger, maybe tiny.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not any degree of.
No, it's marginal difference.
I do agree with Court, and I I would much rather see us rowing together. It's going to be hard. And it's um, I'm not, I'm not saying it's going to be easy, but uh I think it would be a healthier. Way for us to to get through what might be a little bit tough waters the next couple of years.
Yeah, so it would be single warrant, like, so we would essentially, if we were gonna. Not everyone's spoken, but we're talking like single war, a single article, single guideline.
Omnibus, right?
Yes.
Omnibus. Well, it was omnibus and then it became unified.
Yeah, everyone's using different terms. FinCom tried unified on for size the other night.
So and I guess the the one piece that we talked about a little bit was capital is not in this.
No.
No, no.
Not at all.
This is operating budgets.
Operating budget only.
Yeah, we still would have, yeah. This is an operating budget issue.
Sudbury has a, then a capital warrant, and then they have bigger lift capital warrant articles.
Yep.
You know, they'll have like a. I think it might help us. I'll I'll get on the same page about that as well.
I know it's not like directly related to you girls, but.
Well, it is.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, you're right.
Not to take up too much time about you guys explaining your ways of doing things to us, but so. It being three separate warrant articles, you just sort of, maybe I heard you wrong, but alluded to like sort of. Fighting.
Divisive. It's very divisive.
But like, if you, I mean, like you've got your town budget, like the town needs that to run. And then, so what, like, do they, I mean, obviously your school budget must get passed. You. Spend money every year, or has it not? Like, I mean, you gotta. That's sort of my thing about the school, but like people can stand up and go, ah, I don't, but it's like, well, you have to run your school, so you need to pass that budget.
Let me speak to that.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I'm just wondering, like, what do you get? Is it, is it just a very long town meeting? Because then when school comes up, people go, ah.
Yeah.
Oh, that, I mean, I don't know that that's going to stop for you, but no, they can still pull it out, but.
What I could offer up is we're shifting, if I'm correct, we're shifting where the. Where the debate and discussion happens and moving more upfront before the curtain opens on town meeting. That's what we're doing.
That's right.
But you bring up a very good point, which is from Carlisle's ease of understanding what Carlisle does by way of stake in the region. By lumping it together, it makes it a little more complex for, I think, folks in Carlisle. To see Concord Carlisle as a singular entity and there's our part of it. Now it's going to be Concord Carlisle is an entity. Here's Carlisle's part, and it's connected with these other two big Concord units. So you sort of get subsumed in this bigger thing, which I don't think. Will help people's understanding in Carlisle necessarily. However. The alternate view is it'll be perfectly fine because what lands in Carlisle at Carlisle's town meeting is in fact the Carlisle number. You're not carrying Congress numbers over there.
Right.
Well, it was funny, actually. I think there was like a brief moment of, I don't want to overstate it and say panic, but like. Confusion in the FinCom meeting when someone says, but what if we don't want to support the school spend or the town spend? How do we voice that? Um, distaste for whatever it is they're spending. And they're like, oh, we didn't really think about that, so.
They can't take a position on it when they're.
They're taking a position or not, you know, so that I think was funny.
Interesting.
Was, yeah, different. So I don't, yeah, that, no.
No, I just think that that's like actually part of what I like about this is that it doesn't. I I think that it's 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 a really nice reminder that we are all, we are all one town and we have different responsibilities, priorities, goals, all of that. But at the end of the day, this is what it's going to cost. This is what we have the money to spend or whatever it might be. And then we use book to the professionals to say, this is how we actually divvy it up. And obviously the town has ultimate say. Um, but I I just, I think actually that. Putting it under one headline is is pretty powerful.
Yeah.
I know Wayland last year um had some budget challenges. I was watching those meetings for other reasons, but the budget was part of them and um they ended up with a joint school committee select board meeting. I imagine you couldn't invite FinCom as well to try to sort that all out before they got to town meeting.
I'm envisioning.
Point it was ahead of the town meeting process that they passed through it.
And in my thinking about this, uh. I I couldn't help but ask myself, would more time between Lori Hunter and Carrie LaFleur yield an occasional epiphany about a savings here and an efficiency there? And because you you can only spend your time in so many places, and if you're pushed into a room with the town manager and she with you. Maybe serendipity and a little hard work will bump into an efficiency or two that none of us can see right now. We don't know, but you know.
And more and more of it happens now at the department levels and we're seeing it across facilities and other places, but so why wouldn't it?
We don't know.
You you'll potentially more.
I also think too, like, we as a body have a lot of. Dialogue and joint meetings with the finance committee. And apart from capital, we don't really do all that much with the select board, the result of which is, and I'll speak for myself. I'm not as well versed in their budget challenges and their. Their challenges that they're confronting, as I probably should be. And I think that this could be, I don't know who mentioned it, that I wanted, but somebody like. A nice opportunity for some, not that we want more meetings, don't anyone go into a panic. But um, you know, of some dialogue there and opportunity to do a little bit more of that work that I think could be interesting and ultimately. Benefit the town and the citizens as a whole, so.
So they were not working in a silo.
Yeah.
It's kind of working.
Yeah.
Do you guys work with your Fin, like we, like I do a lot of work. Obviously, you've got to work with your FinCom, like our school budget goes to FinCom and like we've had them.
Need a lot with FinCom.
Yes, you know, they'll be like, uh, you need to take fifty off. Like, so by the time we get to town meeting, FinCom's on board. Like, yeah, like we always had, like, at the end of our warrants, it will say, and select board either has a yes or no on this, FinCom agrees with this.
Yes, we do that.
Agree, yes.
So all as we're all on board together.
Yes.
They're not going to be as explicit as here's a number, but they're going to say we're uncomfortable or comfortable. Your efforts and here's where your your percentage lies and so on. So we can read them very well.
Because I, I mean, I realize we're a lot smaller town, but like our things that get voted down are like, you know. DPW wants a new sixty thousand dollar truck and they'll go not this year, next year, because that's a line item. Like, that's easier for them to pick out, but the, right, like I said, like, we given them the whole. I know we give them a line item of the school, but not um, like, that's out there for people to look at, but when you go on, it's like. How, I don't know how many millions of dollars it is, but you know, ten million dollars, that's the budget you get. We don't break it down on that day.
Right.
So it's it's more of stuff like that, like, you know, a police cruiser, well.
Right.
Those get broken out, so.
Right, well, I think we have some information.
Would it be fair to summarize our discussion as largely positive? In support of this?
Yeah.
And and perhaps uh the leadership as it reconvenes could uh outline again what they see as the pros and the cons. We can try to make the pros happen and try to mitigate the cons, you know.
Avoid the.
And does anyone have any additional questions they want us to bring back?
Well, I think the the big one is implicit in all of this, and that is, does this effort to bring a singular budget, operating budget, uh equate with a single guideline number?
Yep.
There was no answer.
There's no answer on that.
Yet.
Yeah.
And to me, I.
Otherwise, what's the purpose?
Well, right, and I, it was funny. I almost said, you know, it was interesting. Um, initially, when informally asked, I said, I think this is great, let's do it. And then I had the same question as you, like, wait a second. If like everything else is status quo and you're behind the scenes and this is just, you know, kind of not an illusion at town meeting. Um, I said, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure I would support it. So I, that was one of my prerequisites. I want an answer to that very question.
I don't want the the result of this to be uh one line in the table instead of three lines in the table.
Yeah.
In the warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the same questions, and I think that'll be interesting.
Yeah.
I think just a general, not generally, a more. A a more specific process, like exactly how is it going to work?
I think we need that anyway before, I don't think we're gonna march blindly into town meeting. I hope not anyway, so yeah, yeah, yeah. Um.
And and I did voice concerns over, you know, it is a shift. We haven't done it this way before, so we really need to socialize this. Which is why all the committees have been talking about it publicly. We're now talking about it publicly. I'm sure we'll probably have maybe a reporter from the bridge or the mosquito report on this, so you know, it will get out there. Um, and it's still a work in progress with some questions to be answered.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
All right.
All right. All right, so moving on, Bob has, this is like an interesting update that he has, because we've got FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And twenty twenty-four, all in one memo. I was like, wow, look at that. So I will turn it over to you.
High blood pressure medication.
So it it just said that Bob is working on, I mean. When you think about it, you were literally working on all of this.
Yeah.
At the same time, simultaneously, which is challenging.
Should I share this or does everybody have it?
Yeah, we all have it.
We have it.
I don't know if I need to share it for the meeting group. You can see it.
I'll share it. Same or not, that's okay.
It is posted online for people at home, so they could, they could pull it up as attachment. Don't share it. Yep, that's fine.
So um, yes, I did want to just, uh, we talked about reporting. I I just wanted to share an update on what's going on right now. Um, and it is interestingly going across four fiscal years, FY twenty-two. Um, the audit's been conducted by the audit firm. They've had all of the um last information we submitted. Um, and I'm supposed to have the financial statements yesterday, um, the draft statements. I don't have them yet. I'll follow up with them, but essentially I've been told the audit's essentially complete. We'll have draft statements and then um opportunity to review and then final statements for FY twenty-two. Um, so it'll be good to have that checked off soon. I don't know if everybody recalls, Desi has end of year reports that were submitted, required to submit every year. Um, all paperwork's been submitted on those. Uh, that was actually submitted in mid-August. Um, these reports um provide all sorts of detailed uh information. There's like about three thousand lines of detail. Across various slices by type of account, whether it's general fund, grant funds, revolving funds, regular ed, special ed, has information on homeless. Um, transportation, that's actually what tells them how much to reimburse us for transportation. Um, so it's a tremendous amount of detail. It's used by the state to gather information for benchmarking, sometimes to guide them on, you know, where they might want to look at. Um, investing, um, inform their decision making. Um, and also um is the foundation for, you might recall, we. Shared per pupil expenditure reports um during the budget process, so that's um data that's um kind of culled from these reports. Um, so there's a lot of data there. The audits, um, we're just waiting for the audit firm to complete those. So that's FY twenty-two, and then FY twenty-two will be behind us. Um, FY twenty-three, um, the financial results for the region are essentially complete. We're just conducting a final review, but basically, um, you know, we 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 closed out um the region. And um, and for CPS, um, I wanted to, uh, we're 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 making substantial progress. We've identified um. Some reconciliations between the town and the school, uh, many entries to be booked on the town side, some on the school side as well. Um, some things like, for example, you know, something booked to S two instead of S three and just kind of making those types of correcting entries where. The town might not be as familiar with it. Um, I wanted to thank um Mary Barrett from the town. Um, she's a town accountant. Um, and a little bit um short-staffed there, and she's been doing a lot of work um with us on. Working through the reconciliations, reissuing reports to us so we can re-reconcile after adjusting entries are are booked. Um, so um. We anticipate uh that's going well. Um, we're we're basically through grant funds onto revolving funds. Uh, school lunch is completed, so we're we're near the end of the reconciliation process there and hope to have that completed. This week. Um, at the end of, um, once the books are closed, you know, we talked about what we're going to be reporting, you know, we'll have the typical reports on the one thousand level, one hundred level for the general fund. And we'll have additional reports um on revolving accounts, grant accounts, student activity accounts and donation accounts. Um, we'll figure out some format that's useful to present those. I've used different formats in the past, but maybe like beginning. Um, we'll figure out some format that's useful to present those. I've used different formats in the past, but maybe like beginning balance and, you know, year-to-date revenues, expenditures and ending balances. Um, so that'll kind of give you visibility to all spending, not just the general fund. Once we uh, have completed that, we move on to uh, Desi end of year reports for FY 23. Again, uh, same type of reports as last year, annual reporting to Desi. Those are um, I say a couple of days of work here. It's probably three or four days of work. There's a lot of detail in there and then to, to proof it. Uh, and those will be submitted as soon as we can after the books are closed. Um, CCRSD will be starting this week. OPEB. If folks um, remember what that is, it's our other, we have a, a trust fund for other post-employment benefits, not the retirement benefits, but the, the healthcare benefits. And um, so the concept of an OPEB trust is um, we shouldn't be, the idea would be that you don't want to be paying out of our current year budget for people who are retired. Um, so that what you, what you do is you fund an OPEB trust and um, the income from that trust, you build up the, up to a value with contributions during employees' lifetimes to fund their retirement benefits, uh, retirement healthcare benefits, so that our, our budget eventually um, would have zero for post-retirement benefits. It would just be, we'd just be budgeting for active employees. So this trust um, goes through a process to um, be audited and valued every year and provides guidance to us on what our funding status is. Um, I do know, just, you know, quick looking at it, that it had better performance last year. It was a down year in the markets, would had better performance this past year. Plus we make an annual contribution to it, but um, so this is um, audit work we have to do to give them all sorts of information so they can do the valuation on employee pay, benefits, all sorts of details. So that'll happen um, in October for both, uh, we, we, we support the town of Concord with data for Concord employees and their OPEB audit. Um, that's their OPEB trust for CPS employees and town employees. And then we have our own OPEB trust for Concord-Carla Regional School District. And I think as, I think that um, we'll see, you'll see some positive growth in that, um, when we actually have the audit completed. And we work with a professional actuarial firm uh, to do that valuation. Excess and deficiency is our equivalent in a regional district of town's free cash. Um, that will be completed during the month of October. I didn't note it here, that's just for the regional district. Um, we file that with the Department of Revenu- Revenues, Division of uh, Local Services. What E and D is, is the cumulative surplus balance of the regional school district. And the maximum allow, about allowable amount of the E and D is capped at 5% of the district's uh, prior year combined operating and capital budget. Uh, we were at 4.5%, I believe, when we presented the FY 22 information. Um, anticipating it will increase um, pretty close to the max. But we'll, we'll have to work through the, the final numbers to see where we get. FY 24, we'll be presenting uh, Q1 data at the first school committee meeting in October. Um, so that'll give us our kind of first look. And we've been kind of monitoring. We've looked at salary information over the summer to get a sense of um, you know, where replacement hires came in. Did we, uh, did we have any unanticipated retirements that we found out about late in the year? Yes, we did have a couple, I think, um, that I can recall. So we'll, we'll be presenting that in October. So you get kind of a slew of information coming up um, this fall. And then um, into FY 25, um, the fourth fiscal year on the, on the horizon here.
There were five. I thought there were only four.
Yeah. So this, uh, the five-year projections for the town um, of Concord Finance Committee um, are underway. We're going to follow the same format um, as we have in prior years. It actually seemed to be well-understood last year, I think, when we presented it. And um, so we'll, we'll follow that method where we present not just the general fund, but present all funding sources and all expenditures. And we kind of uh, arrive at what the general fund impact is at the end. And like with any five-year projection, we feel more comfortable about year one, a little bit less comfortable about year two. And as you get out to year five, you know, there's things that can happen. But so we'll do our best um, to project what we know and we'll make some macro-level assumptions about the future beyond year two. The FY 25 budget process is underway. We've met with uh, the administrators. At our staff meeting, we've distributed zero-based budget templates, uh, detailed models where they um, basically list everything that they're um, requesting for next year. Um, in addition, I went to a high school, uh, department head meeting to just kind of walk through the budget process. There are some new department heads. Um, so it's kind of an opportunity for them to ask questions as well. I think staff is more familiar and comfortable with it. I think they're like, you know, the, the number of questions tend to be less and the ones that they do have tend to be more informed. And the new department heads, um, you know, I think um, also have kind of absorbed some of it from talking to their peers. Um, and I will be at the middle school tomorrow to um, kind of kick off, um, you know, kind of their overview of the process. So the department heads in the middle school and the high school have an important role in this, supporting the administrators. And they uh, tend to focus on the um, instructional materials lines, um, sometimes instructional equipment. Um, you know, there are some other expense, like maintenance um, with music equipment and things like that. So um, but anything instructional related, they tend to focus on um, at the middle and high school level. So a lot more to go on the FY 20 budget process, but you know, the stakes in the ground and we are moving forward. Um, and also right now, we have um, we're working on our grant applications for the entitlement grants. So these are grants that we uh, basically automatically get as long as we apply um, every year. Uh, these are important grants. At the same time, uh, this is happening, the state's rolled out a new grants management system and um, it's a new tool that um, we're learning as we go and um, working with. But the Title I, Title II A and Title IV are called the ESA grants. And um, the IDA grants are the special ed and early childhood special ed grants. Um, we get um, pretty substantial funding for IDA um, in both districts. Title I and Title II A and IV are smaller. Title I varies based on our low-income percentage. So we're kind of at a threshold where um, it, it, it could potentially bump up and bump down. And um, so there is some, Title I is the next largest grant after the special ed grant. So there's a lot going on. Um, this is kind of giving you a flavor for, you know, where we are. And um, I'll talk separately about the borrowing, but um, we'll have, you know, actual detailed data to share with you at upcoming meetings and all these items.
That was extremely thorough and I have to say, um, I really have understood. I asked Carrie actually a question about OPEB today. I'm like, oh, I, I understand it much better now. So thank you for the explanation. Uh, and obviously you've been.
I did not explain.
And I was like, I want to put that on the agenda.
You sure can.
But, but, but it's really helpful and helpful to see how many moving pieces of every fiscal year we're actually dealing with right now. And really an appreciation for your work in your office on doing that. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yep, Court.
I don't know if you can answer this. Concord and Concord-Carla is unique with OPEB in that we are rather well-funded, um, meeting our obligations. Many cities and towns are not. Um, are those other cities and towns getting any pressure? Uh, because I know one of our concerns in past years was we're being so diligent, are we going to suffer for it later? When the state simply moves in and makes everybody whole, you know?
Yeah.
So I hate to think this way, but anyway, is there any, is there any uh, effort um, to help other districts do what we're doing so, so admirably?
Uh, I can tell you in my last district that the OPEB fund just started. Like in the year before I got there, so it was less than 1% funded. Um, I got above 1% in my third year there. That was an achievement. So um, we're, I think we're about, I think we were 39% last year. We were a little bit higher the year before because of the market performance. I don't think the state is going to do anything to fund, uh, to help other districts. They don't have a requirement that the OPEB um, be funded right now. There's discussion that at some point they might make it a requirement. Like, but it may, you know, make 25, 30 years out. So um, yeah, no, we have um, um, the groundwork was done before I got here. There's a, there's a healthy um, contribution in the budget, which um, we could get updates from our actuaries on whether that contribution can change. It's kind of a projection for multiple years and it doesn't have to stay at what it is. They'll usually revalue and at some point give us a new number. Um, but as we get closer, um, then that contribution will come down. And I think you'll see some positive um, trends too in the town's retirement plan where that's pretty close to fully funded. The OPEB here is where I think we're 40. So getting to fully funded relieves, you know, you don't have to make those additional contributions as part of your budget. So it's a good place to get to.
And I suppose it's an appropriate time to say our retirement board does a very nice job on our behalf. Very hard on our behalf. Thank you.
That's great. All right. Anyone else?
I have one question.
Yes.
On.
Microphone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
On uh, the five-year projections, last, last time we talked about this, I think you guys had said you were going to reach out to our attorneys about doing that in light of the fact that it's a bargaining year? I'm just wondering if we had an update on that.
Um, we don't have an update on that per se. Um, we just, we have to bargain in good faith. And I think we're just leaving it at that for now, but we have no update from the attorney on that.
Okay.
But thanks.
So when do you think you're going to start?
Bargaining? Um, well, we have started some.
It's going to be on the.
Yeah, I know. We, we started some discussions.
I've spoken to both um, the CTA and the CCTA. Both are thinking mid to late October.
But we'll have an executive session before you meet.
Yes, definitely.
Probably our next meeting or something.
Uh, well, our next meeting, it's, I, the October 10th meeting, we have a policy meeting first. And then the second meeting of the month, we have a budget meeting first. So we'll talk about that and we'll get it to you.
Right, but you, you can't start before we have an exact session.
Right, right. We can't start for the exact session, but we're already starting at five. So that would, would mean we would have to start at 4:30.
Side effect.
Yeah. And does anyone have any conflicts?
Just remember, you know, early meetings with the unions are ground rules and very.
Yeah.
You're not actually looking at content at all, but you're right, we do need.
It's going to push us back to, if we have exact sessions on days of those meetings, it'll be like a 4:30 start.
Or it's a seven.
Or four.
For a meeting and we.
Or we could turn into.
I mean, I do, I do think we have to start considering with two bargaining units, perhaps having additional meetings over Zoom or something.
Okay.
No, I don't think we want to wear ourselves out with having meetings from four to 10.
Yeah, no. I mean, a lengthy meeting.
I really think three, three-hour meetings after that.
Exact sessions on Zoom are fine, right?
Like we.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yes.
And we could just add that.
That's a bad idea. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
As a, you're right, we can do them on Zoom and make them.
Right.
Easy to attend.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anyone else for Bob? No? Okay. Uh, moving right along to our CCHS campus update, which uh, we have started our discussion about our campus. And we left with Alexa and Carrie had homework to do, which was, one was to figure out what's happening or what exists with CC at play. And um, Carrie was going to talk to CPC. So do you want to start, Carrie?
Sure. Yeah, I had a conversation with CPC as we expected. The bathrooms does not fall under their scope. Uh, but the track does. Um, they were relieved to hear that, or not relieved, but like happy to hear that, that we're looking at this from a potential public-private partnership. They would be thrilled to receive an application, obviously could not guarantee any funding, but um, that it was something that they'd be interested in taking a look at.
And, okay, so Alexa.
So I did reach out to CC at play. So from a factual standpoint, they do still exist. They do have a sort of skeletal board put in place. They've maintained their tax-exempt status. Um, they have funded some minor projects in the past few years. I believe we funded something last, or we accepted one of their donations last year. And they, without having spoken to what remaining board members they have, the answer was, we absolutely could be supportive of this project. What they are sort of looking for, and I don't think it necessitates a formal vote or anything, but they um, they want to know. Um, and they want to hear, I guess, sort of authorization from us to engage with the project. Um, if they think that this is something, A, that we're going to pursue as a committee and B, that we formally, informally are seeking their engagement, they would then sort of convene, have a group discussion, kind of like we do. There, there, the person that I spoke with didn't want to speak for the group. Um, and then they would say, you know, yes, we're willing and prepared to help and we can quickly organize. Um, they did say part of their calculus is going to be, they, they need more support. The, I think the three people that remain on the board cannot, and you know, will not be, do, this is a big lift. So they would, part of their calculus would be determining whether there were new bodies in the pipeline to take on all that heavy lifting. So one of the things that I think they want to hear as we're being recorded is, you know, are, are we seeking their help? Um, and if they hear that message, I think then they will start to do the next steps that would be needed for us to be able to get that help. Does that make sense?
And that help would be in the form of fundraising. It would just be fundraising.
Fundraising.
And then.
Setting costs.
To offset the costs. Okay.
Because like any type of proposal or estimate or anything, that would all come from us.
Yes. So, so what, so again, I think, I think that what they don't want is to start the, again, heavy lift, embark on this heavy lift without having some sense from us that like, yeah, we're kind of asking you to do this heavy lift. Um, they're not going to go do this on their own if they don't believe that there's an ask really from this committee. Now, they know that like that, so we're not saying 100% we are going to put in, install a track and, you know, but, they want to know that we are serious about whether or not this is something that we envision in the near to medium future for the campus. And I think that that's actually fair.
Yeah.
Um, so, and again, knowing full well, they're not going to be able to fundraise the entirety. I mean, maybe they will if miracles happen. Um, so that, that, so I think that, you know, and again, I don't think we can necessarily know tonight whether we're advancing, you know, whether we will eventually advance a warrant article. But I guess, you know, I don't know how we do this. We, we need to sort of say like, is this something we're serious about? Because I don't think they're going to put all of their weight behind it until they have that question kind of answered, which I know is tricky.
Well, and I guess I look at it, is this something that we want a group to fundraise for to offset the costs? That's more what.
Thing is premature. I think we asked after we actually, a warrant article to show that we are serious about something.
Oh, wait, okay. So, okay, more on this.
No, I don't think we have, we haven't taken a vote.
Right, right, right.
So I think it is premature to go ahead and ask an outside group to raise money for something we haven't even gotten serious about ourselves.
But so, but that's the other thing. So would we put a warrant article out there for, for the, so let's pretend the track is $2 million, just because I'm not spectacular at math. So uh, would we put this, a warrant out there for $2 million? And then we ask, is that the right order? Because I think the order of operations here is so tricky.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
That seems scarier to me.
To, to my opinion.
Yeah.
I think you need a serious grassroots movement to come to you and say, we really want to support this.
And they don't want to do that until we know we're serious. So.
Can I just, sure, since we just did this.
Yeah.
Um, so we, the castle that we just built, that was, we didn't do our Warren art, because we did have to do a Warren article for the CPA funding, but we didn't do that until we already were halfway funded.
An outside group came to you and said, we're.
No, we, it was the, it was our, it was our SAC.
An outside group.
But SAC's not outside. That's school advisory council.
Right, but that's not the school committee.
Right. No, it's not the school committee.
Yes.
I didn't know what you meant, but when you were saying outside group, I thought you meant like, I don't know. But so, right, like, so SAC, well, one, because all right, he's not on the school committee, but they said.
well, right, he's not on the school committee. But they said, you know, they've been wanting a thing forever and they came to us and said, right, can we do this? Will you let us, which of course, of course you can redo our playground. We needed it. So that's how we did it. And we started just fun, SAC started, I just, it gets a little messy in Carlisle because we all like, I'm on school committee, I was on SAC.
Right, you're, yeah, it's a little bit.
Um, so it gets a little mushy. But, um, yeah, like we just started.
Yeah.
We had a, we had a whole million by March and started fundraising and then we put in the warrant article.
Cynthia, do you have like hesitation with?
I do.
Why?
Because I don't think we know what we're doing. So we.
But why would a SAC committee know what they're doing?
So for a long time, they've been talking about replacing that playground in Carlisle.
Yeah.
Long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Replacing the playground in Carlisle and grassroots movement built up. And hundreds of people literally volunteered money and time. And then they found an outside vendor and the, the school committee did greenlight the effort, but not until I think they felt like it was a pretty.
It was a lot.
Serious endeavor, right? To me, we're saying greenlighting is something we're not even sure, what are we greenlighting? Them to go off and fundraise for what?
Well, so, so, well, they're, they're two separate things. I mean, we have the track and we have the amenities building.
Right.
The amenities building is really more of, I mean, that was part of.
I think they need to be separate.
No, they are separate. Yes, I think they need to be separate. We have some new, what might be the number. We don't have the new actual number. But that was part of the capital planning task force campus completion. I've seen it on all sorts of items. The amenities building, the amenities building. I went back and I looked at capital plans for CCHS from like, you know, seven years ago, that was always on there. So I guess, does this school committee feel as though we want to pursue an amenities building down by the stadium? Does the school committee feel as though we want a group to fundraise for the track? I mean, I think those are kind of two of the questions that I see as questions, but I'm.
I don't think CC at play would have anything, or CPC would have anything to do with the facilities building though. So I think for this discussion, we're limited.
It's just track. Okay.
So I think, and again, I, I understand. I, I understand that like it's, it's tricky, tricky. But, you know, CC at play has said, we will not, we're not going to go at this alone. We would want some tacit support that that, that you, that you, that the school, whatever that means, Dr. Hunter, the school committee, the SAC is, is seeking this partnership. I think they want, I think they even, I think that will help them even establish credibility in their fundraising. And I think that will help their fundraising. That's what I'm hearing from them. And I understand and respect that position. So. So you're, I get it. You've got some discomfort and I understand that too.
Talking about the track.
Yes, just the track.
Okay.
The amenities building, I think, is totally separate. That's not, that's, that's different.
Right.
From the CPC's perspective, it's really different. CC at play, you know, I don't, I'm not sure, but I think for these purposes, we're talking about the tracks.
Right. And, and in historically speaking, CCA play really hasn't had the tracker cross-country community as part of their board or fundraising effort.
So they don't have anybody anymore.
No, no, I understand, but in, for it to be successful in terms of reaching out to those communities, I think it would be very important that we not just, that we include the, the track and cross-country community in some way. So we're not saying, no, you know, we'll take this. You know what I'm saying? It's just like, you don't want to.
But I think ultimately that's, that we could, we could provide, I mean, so now like we're down, we could advise them, but ultimately like to your point, like, we're not doing this. We're just saying to CC at play. We think this is, you know, I, I think all, all, all they want is some credibility here. Is this something that the schools are interested in? Whatever the schools means. Does that make sense? So, and I think again, and, and certainly, to your point, we can provide that advice. I think it's good advice. You got to engage these communities and maybe.
I was charged with doing, so Aaron Johnkis is coming up from air, for air here from.
Some gigs.
Yes, working with.
Right, right. So there's more to come on this, definitely, yeah.
I would just like to hear, let Dr. Hunter work with that and let, I, you know, I just, I don't think if we rush, 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 you can.
I don't think there's any rush. I think they just want to know, should we pursue this?
Right, but I'm saying tonight, I think I'd like to wait a little bit more and just saying. So we're just doing things in a knot and sort of a hectic.
And we're going to continue to see this on our agenda, you know, and this is definitely something like, tonight was the update. So here's, we have the update. We, we know what they want. I think we can hear from Aaron, you know, through Lori as to kind of where we're at with the track population. And then maybe we'll have more information by our next meeting.
What would make it feel like, when would it not feel hectic to you? Like, so what do we need to accomplish for you to not feel like it's hectic?
I, I, I don't know if I'm on your wavelength on this or not, but I'll, I'll give you my sense, and that is the school should be interested if we have a demonstrable expression of interest from the track community. And I think CC, I'm guessing CC at play wants the same thing.
Right.
And when, when there is enough of, when there, I'm just, in my opinion, you don't have to agree.
Well, no, 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 but I'm saying I'm the only one.
When there's, when there's enough of a, of a visible entity of track supporters, then CC and play will say, if I heard you correctly, they will step up. And I think this school committee would take it seriously at that point, too.
Sorry. So I maybe wasn't clear. That is not what they're asking for. They're asking for credibility specifically from the school, whether that is, and I think they were asking it for it from us specifically. They want to know that we would support their efforts in fundraising.
It's Court, sorry, Court. Can I just say, I think, so the way we did it, it was our set, but it was, they need, they need a committee, like we, like we, I went to town hall and got a certificate of business. We did business as the Carlisle Castle Project, so it was its own like little thing, 25 bucks, doesn't cost much. But we had, we had a principal was on the committee. Like you need, you need all the players in because they're, you know, whoever you're, I don't know who this group is you're talking about. They want to build a track, but this is your, this is this place's land. So we had our elementary principal, we had, we had the head of our CTA, is it CT? We had the head of our teachers association. There were SAC members. I served as a school board member. Like you've got to have a buy-in of also, that's like, that's what I think, like you've got to have somebody here as well as them all working together because you're going to need answers.
So that's what they're looking for. Are we, are we going to be that support? They know, they, they're in, they know how to do the fundraising. They know how to get the bodies to do it. They're excellent at that. What I think the, the key component is, are you, are you essentially requesting us to do this? They don't want to do it without a request.
Because it's, it's legwork to put in. Like we did a lot of first-up legwork just to find out how much money this was going to be. Right, the playground could, we raised like about a million because we built it.
Right.
Had we not built it, it would have been like four million.
It seems to me like emissions, oh, sorry.
No, so like you've got to get all that legwork and then we brought it and said, you know, yeah, we think we can raise this amount of money. Okay, you've got the green light to do it. So.
I'm wondering if the school in this instance might actually be the school and not the committee, because.
Sure, I think, well, and I think that the campus oversight committee, you know, I mean, if you remember, like this is where this all started with the campus oversight committee. And I have a meeting scheduled at the end of the week with Bill Fink, who was a school committee member, who was the liaison to CC at play. And maybe even the campus oversight committee. No, he wasn't to that. He was just.
In the landfill project.
So in the landfill. So I, I think we have a little bit more homework to do and we'll bring it back next time again. And we'll continue our discussions.
Right.
Yes.
I don't think that my perspective on this is entirely inconsistent with yours. In the sense that I think, just as one member of this committee, the school committee could support this initiative if we were representing a viable track interest. I don't want to say we're going to independently tell the track folks that they need a track.
That's, except, except the Concord Carlisle High School needs a track.
Needs a track.
I'm not saying they don't.
Say they. I just want to be clear that we need a track.
But they have to be, the community needs to be on board. We've got to get in the room. Yes.
I think they're ready to get in the room. We can, it's the how, I think.
Yeah, right. So maybe that's the step that needs to happen. You need to invite Erin and some people from the track community that you've heard from prior to these meetings and to just formalize it a little bit more.
And Tracy, can I give you some homework?
Yes, I love homework.
So we kind of jumped over sustainability and the potential solar and on the campus. And I just wondered if you could reach out to the solar task force and the light plant, because I know they did express interest in our site to put solar on it. And I just wondered if that's no longer something of interest.
And I, when I read through the old reports, that had been pulled off.
But we're in a different, because there was no, uh, uh, storage infrastructure.
Yeah.
And the whole, that's all changing now.
Yep. And that I think is, I do think that is where we as a school and as, and as a school committee and the school have to decide what do we need on our campus, right?
But I'm putting that back. I'd like to have a discussion about that.
We also need to do the work to be sure the landfill could even ho- host that, because with the.
My comment, solar canopy or rooftop.
Oh, gotcha. CMOP needs to be part of that conversation.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not.
Okay, sorry, that's helpful. All right, solar canopy.
And then the one other little.
So wait, so taking off the table, the facilities building and the track, you're just talking about something totally different?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Okay, sorry. So we're done with the campus track and facilities discussion? I just wasn't clear.
She's adding, she's adding another.
Another layer to it.
Understood.
And then the one other little thing is I saw that for charging stations, uh, Mass UVIP, I believe, has this up to 50K per site and 60% reimbursement for charging stations. I just thought maybe we could begin to build up a little charging for the cars, charging infrastructure on the high school campus. I don't think it's could be, it's a rolling grant application. It's.
Maybe Eric can help us with that.
That's what I was going to ask of Mr. Sitt. We'll get to that for us.
We'll talk with him.
Abby, I appreciate that.
So you have none of those right now?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, because we, you've got, we have the solar canopies and we've got like three or four chargers. Yeah. Do you know?
Thank you.
All right. Anything else about the CCHS campus? So we have a little more homework to do for next time. We'll get the answer to that. We'll get some track information. We'll come back next time.
Thank you.
More information. And I have not forgotten about the amenities building because I am, again, I know it's not that exciting to put bathrooms at the stadium, but I am just going to put this back on us that that is something that was that, that should have been done, has not been done. So I will put that back into our discussion for the next time. And we'll separate them both out, amenities building and track. Okay. All right, and we're gonna, would anyone mind if we didn't do our chairs and liaisons reports? We don't really have much information. Could we mind if we just push that to the next meeting and Dr. Hunter, your report too, we'll hear from you next meeting?
Double, doubles, you know.
Yeah, we'll do double duty next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be great, only because we have one more vote, which is the vote to approve the CCHS access road borrowing. And you should have a memo from Bob and a motion in your agenda. Bob, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I'm gonna share my screen just so you have it. I don't want.
They've got it on their screen.
Okay.
It's attached to the.
Okay. So this is for the high school access road. We're copying. We have, we're borrowing 853,665. We actually conducted the, the sale of the bond anticipation note. The low bidder was Unibank Fiscal Advisory Services. I'm sorry, the low bidder was Oppenheimer and Company. Unibank ran the auction for us. We had two bids. The low bid was 4.75% stated interest rate with the premium. A premium is when they give you some cash upfront to offset the issuance costs, which were very small in this case. So the effective interest rate with that premium factored in is 4.688%. I attached on the second page the results. And then what I would need is just a motion and approval in the language I wrote below from the school committee to move forward with this borrowing. Unless there's any questions related to it.
Lucky to see a number with a four. It's like sad.
I think it's a pro forma approval on our part. Do we know what final costs of the project are? We had 853 plus another 200,000 allocated for this, if I'm correct.
Plus 421.
Plus 421.
Yeah, okay. That was what we transferred from the operating budget last year.
Okay.
I don't have the math in my head, but 853,053 and 421.
1.4 ish.
1.47 something.
And do we have estimated numbers or final numbers on actual cost?
They are on budget. They.
And we, and have we calculated cost of borrowing at this rate?
It is. I have it on a different sheet. It's about 42,000.
About 42,000 in addition that we obligate ourselves. And the reoffer, I didn't understand that. Is that somehow a prime rate trigger or something?
No, you know what? I, I had the same question and I asked it and I forget the answer, but it basically, what I took away from it is it doesn't apply. We don't have to pay attention to it.
It was a nice number. Yeah, I liked the number.
We can't, we can't get that. That was my question. They're not offering that to us. And, you know, for the first two years of a bond anticipation note, you don't have to pay down the principal. So we'll only budget the interest in the first year. We have required band pay down on the other band, I think is the landfill. Right. But a different borrowing. So, so the impact to the budget will be not too significant in FY '25. Our first payment will be October next year.
Excellent. Well, it looks nice.
Right.
Very nice.
It does, it's all painted. It looks really good.
Like this little up is subtle.
I know, and I do, I do love those new lights. They're really bright, really, really good. So.
Nice. The vendor did a good job.
Yep. Nice work. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. All right, would anyone like to read the motion? And I can't, anyone have it?
I, I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the sale of, oh dear, 853,665 a 4.75% general obligation bond anticipation notes. Parentheses, the notes, closed parentheses of the district dated October 2, 2023 and payable October 2, 2024 to Oppenheimer and Company at par and accrued interest if any.
Second. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, should it really read where, where it says payable, payments starting? Is that what it really means?
No, it's payable. We, we, we borrow and then we, we have to reborrow. That's what a bond anticipation note is. So it'll be a year and then we'll have to reborrow. Yep.
Thank you. Helpful. Okay, got it.
Anyone else? Okay, and all in favor? All right, and with that, I will adjourn. I will adjourn the region. Thank you.
Thank you.